Yay, it starts!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a couple for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all.
Welcome to this festive board meeting. We're happy that you are all with us. And just to give a quick explanation to some of you who are in the room when we came in at about 7:10. So, almost everything that we do as a board is public, and our votes are public. But there's certain items, there's a specified set of items that, you know, under New York State law, are more appropriate for our executive session where we meet not in public. And so, it's always important to list out the items because you need to have full transparency about what you're talking about to your community. And that's what we were doing when we came in at 7:10 and then quickly left, and now we're back. So, just wanted to give you a little bit of context, otherwise it would seem very strange that we came in and we left. So, first, I just would ask if there are any comments from the public regarding the items that are not on tonight's agenda? All right, hearing none. I would ask for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with one revision, which is item 6.4, which is an item related to teacher probationary appointment. It's number three, Kelly Moriarty. On the original, it was great for special education, and it should be elementary education, not special education.
Some questions?
All in favor? All right, motion carries. Next, we do our consent agenda. And the consent agenda is just a way that we conduct a lot of business without keeping you here for hours and hours, because they're, especially tonight, as we get to the end of the school year and then the beginning of the year, there are a lot of contracts and personnel matters, other business matters, that need a board vote. Rather than going through each one in public session, we get all of it in advance. We have time to study it, ask questions, and then to the extent that we want to bring forth a debate on something, then we absolutely can. But if not, then we vote on it in a chunk. So, this will take two minutes instead of taking literally, you know, two hours. So, I would ask for a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda. Item six, personnel. Item seven, special services. And then item eight, business.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? All right. So, just a few things to point out. There were many items on the list.
That was a very special moment.
But it was a special moment. And it was a special moment for a few reasons. First, we are thrilled and excited about the fact that we have approved or appointed two new administrators to our district, which Jen is going to talk about in more detail, as well as two teacher tenures. And we also accepted a donation from the PTA in the amount of almost $14,000 to do an improvement at Wampus, which we are extremely grateful for. We've updated our contract with our beloved superintendent, which we're very excited about.
I'm here tomorrow.
And we also... And we ratified a year extension on the BHTA agreement, which is the teacher's contract. So, we did all that in the context of those consent agendas.
And tonight is very special. I want to talk a little bit about the consent agenda. We will have a section of this meeting tonight where we talk about the two tenure recipients, Ally Delachapa and Jonas Kalish. You were both here. But we could give them like a little round of applause. I see at least one proud mother of a tenure recipient in the crowd tonight. That always excites me. And that is just the appetizer to what I will serve later regarding you. But I also want to talk about some very special new appointments that we have, administrative and teacher appointments here. We are really excited to have these two things happen at the same time. So while teachers are starting a new professional life in Byram Hills, or administrators, they are also seeing teachers or administrators who are reaching tenure. So it's like being at the two different ends of the boat, right? Like, I'm in the back of the boat, and that person is showing me where I'm going. It's really a special time, because the new teachers and administrators get to hear a lot about Byram Hills' culture and community here. And I think that's what essentially helps our teachers and administrators to be successful and to reach a point of tenure where you're really making a commitment to the district in a great partnership. So before we get to the tenure, I want to first talk a little bit about some of our new teachers and administrators. Tonight, we have Kelly Moriarty here. Kelly, you want to raise a hand, and do you mind standing up?
Yeah.
Hi, Kelly. Good to see you. Kelly, that's going to go down as one of the best interviews I've ever had. We could have talked for days. We had great philosophical conversations about elementary education. I loved it. Kelly is going to be our new fourth grade teacher at Wampus and is supported here tonight by Peggy McInerney and Dave Mack, principal and assistant principal. Kelly, we're excited to have you here. We know that you have had experience in two different ways that are really helpful to us, both as an ICT teacher, an integrated co-teach teacher, and also in your capacity as a special educator. You're going to hear many people tonight who actually have a background in special education, which is telling me that people are being trained to think about all kids as different learners, which is something we value, whether students have special learning needs or not. And this past year, she's been carrying out the role of a lead teacher and facilitating collaborative action research at the school district where she is in the city. And that is also something very powerful for us. I'm sorry that I actually said that publicly, because Tim will call you tomorrow. But you will be better for it, to be on that team. So, Kelly, welcome to you. We're happy to have you here.
Thank you.
The next is Colleen Romer. Colleen, I think, is in the back. We actually have two math teachers tonight, Colleen being one of them. And Colleen comes to us from Darien, Connecticut, where she has had experience with pre-calc, Algebra II, college math topics. That was a great conversation that we had about that. And I'm not sure if we're going to be seeing a future coach here, but she has a lot of athletic accolades, her participation in college field hockey and lacrosse. She won three, I don't know if I'm saying it right, SUNYAC championships, which is like the gold medal of college sports. So, we're excited to have you here, all of you here, in the classroom and out of the classroom. We have Elise, the other, you have a partner in crime in the math department. Nice to have two new math teachers coming in together. And Elise has been at Solomon Schecter School for a few years now, and her courses range really from geometry to calculus. What I loved seeing when they came in to meet with me was the breadth of knowledge of all things math at all different levels. So we are very excited to have both of you here. District-wide, Crystal Nardi. Crystal? Crystal has been teaching in Danbury, Connecticut for the past six years. She is our English as a New Language teacher. Crystal will be covering any child who needs English as a New Language services from grades K through 12. Imagine that span. She has experience in not only co-teaching and differentiating instruction, specifically in the areas of math and social studies, so she may be coming to some of our math teachers for help, and the reading and writing curriculum at middle school and high school where she is right now. So that breadth will certainly be a great added addition to our programs. And last but not least, Colleen O'Connor. Colleen, our Byram Hills High School Assistant Principal. And I see Chris Walsh, and I think I saw Kristen Sautner. Did I see you too, Kristen?
She was here.
She was here to greet you and to welcome you. Colleen comes to us, another one who began her career as a special education teacher, transitioned into her role of assistant principal in Brooklyn for the past four years, and then most recently in a neighboring school district. We are very happy that you applied. We are very happy that you sought out Byram Hills. We are looking forward to many years together. We've talked about her goals and her aspirations as a high school principal, and I'm just excited that it meets the cultural needs of our school. So, welcome to you, Colleen. And I think you have to move on to our next agenda.
Oh, I'm too.
Yep.
9:10?
Yep, 9:10.
Excellent. Okay, so we are here, and many of you are here tonight for recognition of the Westchester County Bar Association Mock Trial Championship. Round of applause for you. And when you think about the fact that, I think it's pretty clear that, you know, this county has some outstanding schools and outstanding students, and really a lot of excellence all around, so when you get this crowning achievement in this county, when you think about, you know, what it represents, it's quite extraordinary. And we're proud to see you achieve this goal. And we just want to make sure that you're ready to represent us when we have the next board meeting that's contentious where the community comes. And we need to debate, and we need to defend and argue.
We're coming to you.
Or the next trip we have that we go up to Albany, we need to debate, defend, and argue.
That's you, really.
Yep. But I think the skills, hopefully, that you've learned, you know, throughout the process will serve you really well, whether you go on to be a lawyer or whether you go on to a different career. But I'm sure what you'll take out of this program will be memorable, and you'll last for a very long time, and certainly serve you well when you go to college and afterwards. And we thank our coaches, who have put in an extraordinary amount of time and effort and energy to get you to where you are in terms of the success that you've achieved. And I, this is quite a trophy.
I want to know if it comes with a $1,500 check to buy the trophy display case that you would fit into?
No, right? It's not the board president trophy?
No, nor the superintendent trophy. But I think, I would love to share it for half a year with you, if they would let us.
It's awesome.
It really is awesome. So, my accolades to you also, this first-place trophy and this Westchester Bar Associate, this is the pinnacle. We know that. I've seen so many of you recently that I have to say that you're actually my social life. I think that's great. Other people might think that's a little crazy, but I've seen you in so many occasions lately, just all of the accolades that this particular group has received. Mr. Gilbert came to my office one day, and we had the longest talk about you. And our board really wants to recognize you for everything that you've done. I actually asked him to encapsulate how he felt. So, this is short and concise, and there are no counterarguments. This year's team deserves the same nickname used for the 1980 Cleveland Browns, the Cardiac Kids. In three successive, how about I use the glasses? In three successive single elimination trials against Rynek High School, Greeley, and Maria Regina, the team notched one-point victories. Anyway, everyone knows the saying, "A win is a win." Can you picture Mr. Gilbert saying, "Anyone knows the saying, 'A win is a win.'" And the team, right? I've had years of that practice. And the team advanced to the finals to face our rival, Linebrook High School. On April 4th, the team put together by far their best case of the season, and they won the county championship. In hindsight, it was clear that each participant played a role in bringing home the trophy that day. The seniors on the team played key roles as both lawyers and witnesses. As I call out your name, just raise your hand. Senior captains Alan Chang and Jonas Schwam anchored the team. Yay! And seniors Dylan Starker and Alessandra Calella Albino brought several years of experience as witnesses to each of the trials they participated in. Did you both raise your hands also?
Yes.
All other participants, you could raise your hands if you were here, were sophomores, which bodes well for next year. The team traveled to Kingston to compete in the regionals, and in the end of April, the team won the trial but lost the regional championship in the second trial. And Mr. Gilbert said, "Special thanks go to Ms. Lisa Pellegrino, who has really supported that group, and Mr. Elliot Schuman, who has been, Lisa was the lead coach, and Mr. Schuman is the lawyer coach in prepping members." But, Mr. Gilbert, we would be remiss if we did not thank you for the time and the dedication that you have to showing our students another way of thinking and a different way of presenting themselves publicly. So, we really care very much about the fact that you are doing this program. So, thank you. We'll give you a little round of applause. Nice high-five from the math department chair. And just now, when I said that and that high-five happened, it solidified the fact that they will continue this partnership forever, behind-the-scenes work. So, we want to thank you. Our board meetings are a lot about policy and business and different transactions and the governance of a school. And it is when you come up here that we recognize that all of the work that the board members are doing for free is for the benefit of every single child here and any opportunity that we can offer you. You took advantage of those opportunities, and you exceeded everybody's expectations in it. What we really hope is that you loved it, that we're all in this work together so that you could do something that you really loved. So, I want to thank you, and our board thanks you, and your parents, raise your hands, parents. Parents are proud.
And what's great about this is it's on top of your day job. We know that you work really hard in class, and you have a full load, and on top of all that, you know, able to pull this off to this level of excellence is really, really remarkable. So, congratulations to you all, and you deserve a great and restful summer, especially the seniors, but everybody.
Yeah. I think time to rest is coming now. Now, Dr. Colten Ecker is going to call out your names.
You can come get a certificate from Scott and Dr. Lamy. So, one at a time, we can honor, parents can get ready for the photo op. So, I'll get them a second to prepare.
And when you come up, if you've been to this rodeo before, when you come up, you'll receive your certificate, and then we'll sort of circle around this table so we could get a nice picture at the end.
Let our parents take a picture. So, we'll start with Lily Oster. Stay about right here. And Jordan Bernard. Jonas Schwam. Dylan Starker. And Chloe Weissman. You can get their picture.
Oh, and our coaches, we need coaches.
Coaches come up. You can stand with them.
Elliot Schuman. Ms. Pellegrino. Everybody holding up their certificates at the same height?
Hold up the trophy?
Oh, yeah.
You're going to have to hold it.
Good job, Scott.
All right.
It's the closest one. I'm afraid I'm going to break it. I'm afraid I'm going to break it. Thank you.
So, in one second, we're going to take a break, but we just wanted to do one more item while everybody's here.
Oh, yeah, we have one more bit of homework before we go. Since you have no homework time.
It's a special item, so we want everybody to be here for that, and then we'll go on to the rest of the agenda, but we'll make sure we give you time to leave in between. So, item 9.1, which is recognition of our tenure candidates.
Yes. So, I would love to have our students, especially students who are here who may have had these two teachers over the course of the last few years, to be here to hear a little bit about our tenure recipients. Gina Cunningham is going to talk about the tenure journey a little bit, just in case we have any future educators in the audience who may want to know what your education experience is about.
Right. So, whether you are a brand-new teacher or brand-new at Byram Hills, when you first come during your first year, we give a lot of professional hand-holding in the way of a new teacher course, supporting you in terms of your classroom instruction and management. We offer our teachers a mentor program to support you in understanding our culture and the issues that may arise. You have opportunities to collaborate daily with your colleagues and your administrators alike. At the same time, you have numerous evaluations. You've met with countless administrators who have evaluated you formally or informally. You've received a lot of recommendations and suggestions in the way that you can improve your practice in the classroom, and you have taken those willingly and applied them. You've also, your strengths, of course, have also been identified throughout that process. All the while, we've asked you to integrate into our larger Byram Hills community, whether it's becoming involved in extracurricular activity or in some kind of advisory, perhaps coaching, anything along those lines. And you've welcomed those opportunities as well. And I can honestly say, having worked with Jonas and Ally alongside of you for two years at the high school, I know that your, the students, whether it's out of concern or whether you're celebrating their successes, they are at the forefront of everything that you do, and the community and all of us appreciate that for sure. So now, officially, having been recommended for tenure by the Board of Ed, you join all of us in supporting others that are coming, whether you're new tonight or starting here in the fall, in fulfilling our mission. So we are very happy for both of you, and tonight is a very special night.
Now, I want to share just some words about each of our tenure recipients tonight. If Ira Shulman had been here tonight, he would say that, you could all say it with me, that tenure, receiving tenure is like becoming a partner in a law firm, right? It's not that point that you can rest on your laurels, it's that point where you have made that serious commitment to be a part of something that is going to grow and expand over time and reach people in different ways that you didn't know that you could. So I think that our two tenure candidates tonight really exemplify that. First, I want to talk a little bit about Jonas Kalish. Jonas, when he came to Byram Hills, he came with quite a bit of experience from Stuyvesant and from Linebrook. What he wanted at Byram Hills was cutting-edge professional development, and that's exactly what he came here and found and took advantage of. Jonas is, he's been a big part of our University of Michigan work, which is project and problem-based learning. He has gotten into standards-based grading, learning about that. He is one of the teachers on the data team who implemented a different practice in his classroom. Instead of just putting an X over that math problem that's incorrect, he highlighted them, and so students can look at what their errors are, have opportunities to make corrections, not just look at a score and a grade and not actually learn what they didn't get right. It's a great practice with a lot of research behind it. He chaperoned the math team on trips and competitions to Fox Lane several times over the fall and the winter. And what's important to know about Jonas is that all of this wasn't something he signed on for, right? As a committee. This is something where he may not have even originally been asked to do this work as a member of the math department, but he came forward and said, "Can I sit in?" And that speaks volumes to you as a learner, and that's exactly what we are looking for for the sake of our kids in their classrooms and in the way that they're being instructed. So we're fortunate that he came here because he actually heard that we were cutting-edge in professional development, and he's been just a great part of that. Chris Walsh has some words about you. He said, "In every single pre-observation meeting, Jonas has sought out and incorporated suggestions made before starting his lessons. And when meeting after, Jonas is only eager for more feedback so he can continue to refine his craft. He can frequently be found not only collaborating with his colleagues, but asking others to observe their classes. Whenever there's an opportunity for professional development, for example, the University of Michigan work most recently, he asks if he can observe and learn. He's highly reflective and supports classroom strategies that empower students to become leaders in their own right. He's also attentive to and supports strategies to minimize student anxiety." And this part, I really know, he is a calm, warm demeanor that immediately puts his students at ease and makes his colleagues feel as though he's always been a part of that math department family. I had the opportunity, Jonas, to see you, especially in your first two years of teaching in your class, and each time I saw you, you asked me difficult questions, which showed me that, how reflective you were. And you also asked me to come back and look at other components of your teaching. I think that that has given you the strength as a math teacher, and knowing that you are as reflective as you are, I know that our students are only getting the best. So I'm very grateful that you decided to join Byram Hills and that you've given more than anybody could have ever asked. So, congratulations, Jonas. And now, where's Ally's mother? Okay, you're listening, right? Ally's level of engagement with her students in the classroom is the same as outside of the classroom. At any given day, you can go to Ally's classroom after school, and if kids are coming, Ally is there. Ally is there, and she stays. And she's not, as a resource room teacher, or even in English or math lessons, any opportunity that kids have to seek her outside of school, they are doing it. She is providing math instruction, she is providing support to kids in every one of their content areas in the high school. Ally has taught or is teaching resource room at the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. She's part of a skills learning center, has taught regions-level English, and she is part of the flexible support program at the high school. So if anyone knows everything about every student's content during the course of a day, it's Ally. And she will learn anything she needs to, to help those students. Chris Walsh says something, this is like, maybe I could say this without crying. All right. Every marking period, Ally writes handwritten congratulatory cards to students who earned excellent report card grades, or those, Tim, or those who have demonstrated significant areas of improvement in particular subject areas. She's received positive feedback from both parents and students about this, as the kids are not accustomed to receiving anything handwritten in the mail in this day and age. I think that that personal stamp on your relationship with children is what we see all the time, even outside of school with the social advocacy group. I mean, Ally, you have been everywhere with them. You have been to Bristol, the Social Advocacy Club has gone to Mount Kisco Elementary School to play soccer with kids, they've been a part of Mount Kisco's Learning Links After-School Program. You are just demonstrating for kids outside of school exactly what I'm seeing you demonstrate in your classroom. We are very lucky to have you here, Ally.
Thank you.
So, I want to thank you both for your commitment at tenure to your invested interest in our kids always. Thank you. Congratulations.
And we're thrilled to, from a board perspective, offer this tenure, and I think that it's worth reflecting on the fact that, you know, we're very lucky in Byram Hills that we have longevity of our staff and administration and teaching staff. I mean, we do a great job of trying to make this place a place that you want to stay and grow and learn and, you know, do great work. And we're fortunate, because that's not true in every district, and it's certainly not true around the country, but every year, we're equally proud that we have sometimes a few slots here and there for, whether it's new assistant principals in this case, or tenure teachers, or new teachers coming to the district. And we recognize the huge value in someone coming in from the outside and making us even better, and teaching us things that we didn't know before, and hopefully, it's a cycle where we teach all of you and we learn from each other. So, we welcome you with open arms, and we look forward to working with you into the future.
And to our seniors, how many of you are 18? Okay. I was three years older than you when I came to work. I was three years older than you when I came to work at Byram Hills. So I certainly hope that I see that longevity in everybody else who's here. Make the commitment, it's really worth it. It was about eight years ago. Thank you, Mike. Or a few lifetimes. Congratulations. We're going to take a break, but to our tenure recipients tonight, to our new employees, teachers, and administrators, we are so excited you've decided to join us and come, and to our students, to those of you who will not be here next year to come, we wish you luck, and to those of you on the team who are going to be here next year, we're going to see you here again. I want a bigger trophy. Congratulations.
All right, to our media, keep going on.
We are ready to roll.
Ah, 11:21. Byram Hills Media Presentation.
Yes. This is very exciting. We, the district is moving in the direction of our own media center at the high school, and we have Brian Melso and Elise Traynor here, who are going to talk to us a little bit about their pre-planning and the direction, whet our appetite for a great year to come, and give us some really fantastic numbers of Byram Hills BTV right now. So I, with no further ado, I will ask you to start.
Thanks, thank you, Jen. Thank you, everybody, for listening to us this evening. Brian and I are very excited about this new venture, and we wanted to just briefly share a few components. Aligned with the mission statement of the district, we've created our own mission statement, which is actually up on these boards, but I'm going to read it with you guys, to showcase, this is our new mission statement, moving forward. "To showcase student accomplishments, district initiatives, and events through digital and social media, web content, press releases, and publications, we are committed to educating students, engaging volunteers, creating interpersonal communication, and sharing information with the Byram Hills community."
And, moving forward with our communication resources under one roof, we can now easily showcase, oh, I'm sorry. We can now showcase district events, information, and media across multiple platforms strategically to create a bigger window, sorry, to the community to receive information and highlights about the district.
If at any time you guys want to stop us and ask us any questions, you absolutely should. I hope you can hear us over the crowd out there.
I don't want to hear them.
Okay.
No, she didn't.
The Brooklyn Bridge came out.
How about clap twice if you can hear me?
And if you could go back to that other slide, the interesting thing is that, for the sake of our public, they should know that prior to this media center, all of this information was housed in different areas, done by different groups, some in-house and some not, and so it was very hard to grasp the progress and the potential to move forward. And as Brian said, this cross-platform, when, we didn't have control over, of course, we had control over the content that came out, but it wasn't like we had one group that was working on this as a project. It really was spread out quite thin across the district.
And there's a synergy and efficiency too, because then you have an event or something that you have to get out there, and you figure out the best medium and do it on different platforms at the same time, so, you know, makes a lot of sense.
Right, moving on from just doing the video content, which is what Brian and I handled before, now we have these multiple platforms in which to cover all the events in the, in our community. As we take on these added responsibilities, both for print and digital media, we look at this as an opportunity to make it our own and create some changes. Nothing crazy, nothing too fast, but as a start, Brian used his graphic design skills to update and, in my opinion, upgrade a very old style that we had for the Spectrum, and we feel that this fresh, new design that he's created will ultimately, we hope, help our readership grow, and that is really where we, where our goals are headed. And this is a sample of the existing Spectrum and the one that Brian has designed.
This probably is much better.
It's why I never realized that it was dated, so you look at it like this.
Yeah, you look at one against the other.
Yeah, so true.
And it has, you know, this little table of contents, so you can actually see what's inside of it, and this is a skill set that Brian has had for many years and uses a lot within what we do. So this was just an opportunity to just sort of create a new, fresh look for the Spectrum, which we thought would, you know, help increase readership.
And we're still planning for the Spectrum to come out in print, but there is even discussion of, should we do both print and digital, to have links that are embedded in this? And people like, they like both platforms, but the opportunity to have something digitally that you could send to family in different parts of the country is fantastic. So eventually, we could have that capability too. This is where keeping things in-house allows us to grow.
Can I ask a question? Is, as far as like the branding of the district as a whole, does this fall under Deepak's area?
Yes.
Okay, so this...
Yes.
So how does that work exactly? You came up with that design for the Spectrum, but how does that fit into like the greater image and branding of the school district? How is that coordinated? Exactly. You mean as far as Deepak is concerned, or?
Or just in general, like what is the process?
The process is, basically, we'll have conversations together, a design will be created, we will present that to Deepak, and if Deepak really approves, then we'll go to Jen, Tim, and we'll have discussions then.
Okay.
Nothing is ever instantaneous, there's always approval, there's always a process.
And the media center includes the newsletters, Bobcat TV?
Yes.
Yes.
Bobcat TV will remain the same. We still intend to produce the same kinds of content, the same amount of content. We're just expanding our role now into the print and, you know, and social media aspects of it to really keep it all unified and branded.
So it will still remain on a whole, like full segments, full programs? We're actually going to strategically place that content across multiple platforms. So really, just to increase the viewership. For instance, if you want to follow Byram Hills on Twitter, but person B wants to follow Byram Hills on Instagram, they will be able to receive that information on multiple platforms.
Okay, but that's all going to come out of the media center?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great, okay. And what about the district website? That's you guys' too?
That will be, yes, now.
I mean, and that was a function partially of the person that oversaw it leaving, but it definitely makes sense to keep it within the media center.
On the social media side, the, you know, proverbial keys to the posting kingdom, right? Right now, that's, at least on the athletics posting, I know Brett is involved, I think getting more resources on that will be really helpful, because I know it's difficult for them to get that content up all the time, but who's, you know, who's going to post? Who's got the pressing of the post button control, right? Like what's acceptable and what's not? Like what's, how's that being processed, I guess?
Well, any writing or anything that's going to be put out comes through our office first, before it goes out.
What if it's something like, you made me think about this, like athletics?
If it's results of a game or something, that, that they'll just post. Or if it's pictures, like, you know, we're at the elementary, athletics will post it. If we're, if there's a specific celebration at an elementary school, the principal and the assistant principal have posting rights. So they won't ask my approval to post an event that's occurring in their school, so that. But any press releases or any news articles come through our office.
I love that they've been posting those pictures now. Have you given insight to what your kids are doing when they're not there?
I know, I know.
It's great.
Well, I have to say, while we are here, Lisa Flam is here, and Lisa has been working with us through Bosie's, and she has really taken a hold of that Facebook page, so a lot of this credit goes to Lisa.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, she's doing an amazing job.
So just to conclude, this is my segue. The past few years, BTV's media numbers have really increased. Our viewership has grown tremendously. Last year, we had a 65% growth from the year previously, and this is through analytics through YouTube and Facebook, when we post through Facebook as a platform. This year, we have a projection of 95% from increase of viewership from last year, which I think is tremendous.
What are the most popular things?
Currently, Shrek, the musical.
Shrek.
Is number one.
My budget of the whole...
That's what I asked. That was my question.
Yes. We do, we had the rights for distribution on that, which we don't have for every show, but that was the number one most popular.
It was so good. But I love that you guys are doing the breakfast, the principal's coffees, and, you know, if you were working very...
Well, while those are popular, they're not in the top five of most popular shows.
I still don't know that you're taking them, that they're being posted, a lot of people aren't.
Well, we're going to try to improve upon that. You know, we had sort of left that in the hands of the principals to post, and I feel like sometimes that happens and sometimes that doesn't, but we're going to try to take a hold of that.
And if you look at the numbers for principal's coffee, they typically are about 100 or 250, and you think of the target audience of that principal's coffee, say it's 250 people that are the target, that's a pretty good number.
Yeah, it's not bad.
100, 250 people are watching the likes?
When they're sent out, yes.
Oh, that's... The six that show up.
Right. I was going to say, 10 to 12 that show up.
Right, 10 to 12. What's your memory?
Did you guys do the ASR recently?
Yes.
Okay, you did that, and then Mike has a good question that I might dovetail off of.
Just, I think the other thing was on the school newspaper, The Oracle, will that be coordinated? Because I know sometimes they're doing sports articles, but those aren't getting posted, like...
They have a social media editor.
You know, they really operate as a student-based club with an advisor on their own. Now, our Bobcat TV student-based club does collaborate on projects, but as a media center, you know, we hadn't intended to coordinate with them, but it's not a bad idea to consider that.
I will say that Catherine, Ashu, and I have had conversations about that collaboration, about creating social media content, not like journalistic type of...
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be great for the students that are writing there to get their stuff, because I think, unless you go to find The Oracle, sometimes you don't find it. In this case, you know, you have some great content that could easily, you know, once you have the mechanism for posting it, that's...
Right.
...would be nice.
Just for branding, it would be nice, I mean, all coming out, number one, same look and feel.
When Jen first approached us about doing this media center with the two of you spearheading it, I mean, conceptually, it just sounded amazing right away, and both of you are amazing. You're always ever-present at, you know, all kinds of functions, and I've worked with both of you personally, I think it's great and really excited to see what you do. This is already looking wonderful, so I'm really happy about it.
Yeah, you've helped the foundation, you've helped the Piscina Say, you've helped, obviously, all the work you do for the district.
Never say no. Learn to say no.
Really great.
Never say no, projects and things.
So we're excited about this. This is, you know, a new venture for us, but it's really within our wheelhouse, and to, you know, be expanding and doing something for the district like this is a really great opportunity for us.
How many years is this up yet? I feel like I remember when it started.
It's okay, I've been here since the inception, and that has been 13 years.
13 years. It's just amazing when you think about the evolution, though, in 13 years.
We have a lot of parent volunteers too. They celebrated the parent volunteers the other day, it was very nice what you both said to them, and they have a parent base that consistently comes and helps with all these events.
It's been great. I mean, some parents start when their kids are in kindergarten and stay with us even beyond, you know, high school graduation.
That's amazing.
You know, I would say there's about 15 to 20 really dedicated volunteers, and they shoot mostly things that their kids are in, but sometimes they would prefer to just watch what their children are in, but they'll volunteer for other things that they're interested in. But I have parents at every grade level, so if there is a, what was just the other night, an eighth-grade concert, you know, I will go there and just make sure they're comfortable with the equipment and the setup, and then, I mean, I've seen a lot of eighth-grade concerts, and so I felt like I couldn't, you know, miss this one, although, you know, we watch it in the editing days. But at every grade, we have parents interested and available to videotape these events, which has been...
It's pretty amazing.
Yes, absolutely. And there's constantly new upgrades in our equipment, so we then retrain them, retrain them, and they always keep up, you know, and we always have sort of a fallback position. If a particular microphone doesn't work, then the camera mic always captures good audio, whatever it is, you know, we would never leave somebody just out there, like figure it out. You know, if they're the slightest bit insecure, then I stay at the event with them. And any training, you know, we do hands-on, in-the-field training, and make sure that they go to three events at least with somebody before they would take on an event by themselves.
Is live streaming still happening, and students are doing that?
Yeah, we actually are live streaming the graduation again, so we started that up, and then students are, we have a couple of superstars that just want to be commentators, and they're fantastic, and we have a whole crew that focuses on that, so that is still a thing.
Thank you for training, I wouldn't have done this.
Yeah, thank you for your work.
And keeping it all under one roof is so nice.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Great.
Do we want to, before we go to review policies?
To the interview.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we're just going to skip ahead, and then we'll come back to policies in a minute, but to 13.1, which is under new business acceptance of internal audit report for 2018, 2019. We invite our auditor, Mike DeVaults, to the podium, and we thank you for your work with the Audit Committee, because we've been briefed as an Audit Committee about the report, but we welcome you here in public session to address a room.
Absolutely. If you didn't catch that, I'm Mike DeVaults, I'm the Principal of Mental Metzger Bar for the District's Internal Auditors. And as Scott mentioned, I met with the Audit Committee ahead of the meeting to go through the report. You know, nothing is exciting as the media report, but more good news, there was not really any findings of much significance in the audit report. The district continues to do a fantastic job in the business office, and I mentioned to the Audit Committee, I think that the overall cooperation that we receive and the responsiveness that we get from all the employees really is probably a result of the tone at the top that the district sets here, and, you know, in addition to being a great place to learn, it appears to be a great place to work, and everybody seems pretty happy. Do you have any questions about the process of the report before I go? And I'll just leave with a thank you, guys, for an opportunity to serve the district, and hopefully, we can continue this relationship.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your work, it's super important, and we're glad you came today to address us.
Thank you for waiting, that we put kids first always.
No problem. That's what we're here for, right?
Thank you.
All right, take care.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, back to policies.
Policies, okay.
Do you have to accept it?
You have to accept it.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. I get a motion to accept the internal audit report for 2018, 19.
Second.
All favor?
Good gosh.
Okay, question carries. Thank you, Donna.
Say the words, I just want to tell you.
Can I go down?
Yes.
Okay. So, policy, I'll start with, we have both second read and first reads, starting with the second, just to review. This was at the last board meeting, we have four policies for second read, student health services, some dates changed for submission of health certificates, and some changed due to the McKenna Bennett Fento Homeless Act, some other language edits, so it wasn't too much in that one. We have the display of the flag, which was over 10 years old, but NISBA had triggered this for review because a lot of questions had come up, so there was some clarification in language on displaying the flag.
And now, everywhere I go, I check if the flag's in the right spot.
Me too.
It is here.
I've moved it a few times. Student progress reports to parents was also over 10 years old. We wanted to update this due to changes in the parent portal, and some changes to our report cards and parent conferences to make sure that our policy was aligning with some new practices. And then finally, we had our grading systems was also over 10 years old. And this was also because, this came to NISBA through the Controller's Office, where we wanted to make sure we reflected specific changes from this date that were important in terms of having checks and balances in the grading system, so that anyone could get into the system and change grades without there being checks and balances. So those are all for a second read. And then we have three...
And then we have three policies for first read that came from the policy committee. Those are academic intervention services. This was some changes, some recent emphasis from state on regulations that districts must have a district-developed procedure and also make sure, ensure that there's parent notification about the procedures, as well as notification for entry into academic intervention services and exit from the program. And also clarifies response to intervention versus academic intervention services. So this policy is updating some new emphasis in the regulations. And I will also be speaking to this plan. You will be reviewing and approving our new. For now, we'll call it academic intervention services, but I'll explain the, the change in emphasis when we get to that part. Uh, the next policy is policy 6632, which is financial software controls. We were updating this to align with our practice. It had some old language around the director of technology designating, being designated as the systems administrator, but that wasn't the case anymore. It's done through our business office with both Susan and Kelly. And we also tweaked some other language to make sure it was accurate to the procedures in place.
I just want to make sure you said 6635.
Uh, 6635, yes.
Okay, I thought I heard a different number.
I did say 32 because I wrote down the wrong number, but it's 35. Thanks for that.
Is there, is there one systems administrator or is there usually like a redundancy in the process where there's two people that have access in case one leaves or?
Right, so in here, we do have some redundancy of practice where both the treasurer and the business official will be overseeing approval of changes. Before, we had it as one person and we, we actually discussed at the policy committee that we wanted those people for some redundancy. And then finally, makeup opportunities. Again, it was with old policy. And when I read it, it didn't seem to really match what we were actually doing in practice. So I met with all the principals and we reviewed the policy and made some edits to make sure it was accurate. There's also a distinction as kids get older in the system. We want to put more responsibility on students advocating for making up work. So this policy distinguishes between elementary students where parents may be more involved in seeking out information. As opposed to secondary, we want to put that onus on to students as they get older. It also references the code of conduct for any consequences to where there may be issues with academic integrity. You know, we encourage, the purpose of this policy is encouraging that being in school is very important, but also acknowledging at the same time, there's going to be reasons students miss school. And that we want to provide those opportunities for students to have equity in making up work. That's what this policy is intended for. That's the first read.
Comments or questions first or?
I'd like to thank the policy committee. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, thank you. These are a lot of, a lot of policies. So I would ask for a motion to approve the second read of 4311 dot one, display of flag, 4710 grading system, 4712 student progress reports to parents, and 5420 student health services.
Second.
On favor? And then approval, a motion to approve the first read of 4325 academic intervention services, 4760 makeup opportunities, and 6635 financial software controls.
Second.
On favor? All right.
So if there's no more policy means this year, right?
We have one more next week.
Oh, we do.
And we generally review what we've done this, this year.
What's your thinking?
We just want to make sure we had breakfast with you one more time.
I think you expected three more before the end of the month.
Yeah.
And Robin, if you.
I'm on that committee.
And Robin, if you call in sick, there's makeup opportunities.
And we talked to the academic integrity group about that.
All right, one more.
All right, we jump to 13.2, multi-tiered system of support plans. And let me just get my plan ready. I have to go up here. So let me share this screen with you. So in your packet, you have our new plan for approval. I do want to thank all of those on the front cover, including Jill Boynton, who we spent months at the beginning of the year reviewing our old plan and updating it this year. So there was a lot of work put into that. I want to thank her for that. So the new plan, you know, we talk about academic intervention services, which is a state mandate. And that is the, the state mandates that if students receive a score on a state test below a certain threshold, that we provide services to get them up to speed in the following year or following semester of the state test. And then response to intervention was another piece brought in about 10 years ago, which was meant to be more flexible. And so that you could do ongoing interventions earlier, so that you're not waiting till a state test at the end of the year. If you notice that a student might be having issues earlier, so response intervention allows that. So we're now moving in the state towards something called the multi-tiered system of supports, which is meant to also include the academics of AIS. However, it's also including behavior supports and recognizing that sometimes academics and behavior depend on them. So I'll just show you one piece of this for discussion, which is giving the overall framework of a multi-tiered system. So we have three levels of tiers, we call them, on the left of the academics, and that's what we've had in place before. Tier one is essentially work that's being done in the classroom with teachers. And for behaviors, it's including all students. On the tier two is when there might be some additional supplemental instruction that needs to take place. And then tier three is where it's more intensive and more focused and is done outside of the classroom setting. And you can see on both sides, the academic tiers as well as behavioral tiers. So we're developing a more comprehensive framework for supporting students at different levels based on their needs. And then what this plan does is outline the district approach to the interventions, whether it's academic interventions through response intervention, academic intervention services, or what we call PBIS, the positive behavioral, behavioral instruction in supports.
And Tim, just to clarify, these are not kids who already have IEPs or 504s.
Exactly right, or it could be actually. So a student could need some academic support in addition to what they're receiving through either the IEP or the 504 plan. If I go over to page three, you can see the response to intervention and how we deliver the academic support. You see in that particular triangle, a level four. And Mia, that would be where it would be a special education program if students go through a tier one, tier two, tier three and still are struggling and not meeting the standards.
So it might result in.
It could result in a recommendation. What this is helping us do, and our goal with Jill is really streamlining the system so that all classroom teachers and the building principals are using the same framework. And that's the intent for the state. It's actually a good regulation that's making sure that we have a district-wide approach that's consistent across buildings. And our plan was revised and rewritten with these new frameworks to make sure all principals understand it and all the chairs understand it, and that we're applying the same standard across the system.
So this is K 312, tier one, two, four?
Yep, K through 12. Was there a lot of variation before or is it sort of informally, almost conforming to this anyway?
So we were doing a really great job with the academic side of it. We'd spent some time on response intervention and academic intervention services. There was, there's still variation from K through 12, as you can see from some of the charts when you get through this. Some of this is, I'd say K 5, we've got it tightened up now with Peggy and Mary Beth working closely to tighten that up. There is some difference as we get into the middle and high school. High school is the hardest place for this and we're still working with, you see Lisa and Dwayne's name on the front of this because they're helping us design the system at the high school level, to tighten up the system and align it better to the framework. So the behavioral side is new in terms of thinking of it in terms of the tiers. We've always had PBIS in place as intervention, but we've never had it really as a framework of tier one, tier two, tier three. And now, as we adopt this plan and we have worked closely with the principals for this, that will help us define for classroom teachers, thinking about behavior interventions as well. What do I do in the classroom first? That's not working. What supplemental work I need to do? And if that's not working, what's the tier three out of the classroom intervention that needs to take place? That framework is helping us all with some continuity and helping us define now, what are those interventions at tier one? What are those at tier two and what are those at tier three? And having some continuity across grades.
I think it's more difficult on the behavioral side to define the standard, right? So academically, it's pretty straightforward. What, what, you know, I don't, I guess my question is, how do you then define, you know?
Behavior and social supports.
Right, so you'll see some of the things we're showing as supports on page four and what we mean as the framework and the program. So as you see it, both Coman Hill and Wampus now using, we're developing a social emotional curriculum, which is one way that will help us define it. Both buildings, Wampus and Coman Hill have always had a PBIS, which is defining what behavioral expectations are. And then the Kelso, if you think about that, we all are familiar with Frog at, at Coman Hill. And that use, that has defined behavioral expectations. So those are the types of tools that we're using. They may look different as we get into the middle school and the high school. So that's what this chart is intended to do, is start making clear what those frameworks and thus what those expectations are for behaviors. We've never had it all in one place where we can compare them and look at the developmental growth. So this has allowed us to start doing that. And the principals were excited by this because they felt now, this is a tool that's really concrete, that will make sense.
And we can.
For students who are, you know, sometimes meeting those or falling back, at least then there'll be some consistency as they go through the different buildings, so.
Right, so when Peggy started at Wampus and we started to look at this place this year, really having her experience at Coman Hill was helpful in the sense that she said, you know, I can see how I can use some of those same things. So as you see, we combine the same frameworks and programs at Wampus as we have Coman Hill. It does have to get more sophisticated as kids get older, a little bit different, whether kindergarten or fifth grade. Peggy's aware of that developmental level and we're refining that as we go through it, but she can still use some of those same expectations. And then it goes through the details. I won't go through all the details unless you have questions of the plan.
Do you measure any of this, like building by building, on an aggregate basis or is it more just situational? So you see someone that falls in tier two and then here's the action you take?
Now, we really do have data on this and thinking about it, if you recall, I was showing the data dashboard and we can track some of this behavior through that as well. That's going to be a tool that will give us some hard numbers, some quant, some way to quantify, quantify it or even capture the qualitative things that we're seeing. But we do look at, um, when I go back to page three in that chart there at the bottom, when we're looking at the different intervention programs and the ratio, all that stuff we have data on and how many students are in each of these tiers at a given time. Now that we've defined it, we're able to start capturing that information and it's going to help us a lot. Particularly when we get to, to tier four. You know, when we know how many kids we're classifying, how many kids are really getting IEPs or 504s, we now are looking at some of these tiers in a more concrete way where we can see kids moving through it more. The idea now is that we're able to, with looking at our exit criteria, our exit criteria was different at every building and we weren't always identifying kids. For example, at Wampus, we would enter them in the program and never formally identify when we were exiting them from the program. That was some oversight. We need to be doing that. So now we're tracking that in numbers. So we know, we have to notify parents when we exit them from academic intervention services. We should know that if a kid we were giving tier three support to and now they're ready to move to tier two, we should be tracking that data and we're developing systems now that we've actually quantified the expectations.
Be interesting to see with the, with the dashboards if it actually reduces the number of kids with IEPs and 504s because they're getting these intervention services, like there are these steps before.
Now, if you'll recall, we've, we've piloted two intervention programs this year. We're for both literacy and for mathematics. Mathematics in grade four with Math Navigator and Level Literacy Intervention, LLI, in grade three. We're going to expand each of those, each of those interventions to another grade next year. And I suppose by mid-year next year, we'll have an idea if we really feel these are working. And I'll come, present to you that we adopt those two programs as intervention tools. So I've been working closely with Peggy and Mary Beth at the elementary level on both of those. And we saw really good numbers and I'm hoping also when I present that information to you next year to look at those intervention tools, that I'll have some hard numbers on our IEP recommendations. Sounds like our parking lot's being used for. Drag racing. I used to go practice in our high school parking lot when I was driving.
We'll just look at the camera when we're done. They're filming trees out there, please.
We have the camera. So I'm hoping to be able to present to you some hard numbers on IEP, you know, students with IEPs and students of 504s. Preliminary data with Jill, talking to Jill this year, is that the numbers are looking like they're reduced in some grades. I can't attribute directly right now, but we're, we're thinking in a couple of years, I'll have some, some good numbers on that.
And when you look at the resource need around intervention, whether it's behavioral or academic, year by year, if you had a school with 750 kids in a class, you would assume that it's going to be almost identical because it's such a big set of kids. We're a little smaller, 150. Is there a lot of variation year to year or is it, is it very uniform? Just thinking even from like a staffing and management perspective, because the more variation, the tougher it is, right?
We've had some variation and I think we're going to see more consistency across grades in a few years as we tighten it up through this. I think it was the application of this at different grades and how we were.
More the application rather than the population.
Oh, yeah. You're always going to get variation in population with, with special education. You're just going to see those fluctuations, but there should be some window, some range.
Right.
You know, from year to year. I think we're going to see continuity as we tighten up this plan.
So speaking of staffing, are, are current teachers going to be manning this, you know, this program? Are they going to be?
Yes, so we do. Well, the, the question is, when you see the teacher of intervention over here in the right column, that was a big discussion with the principals. Who is actually the teacher of the intervention? And in some cases, it wasn't really clear. And so part of our work with Jill and with the principals was tightening that up so we can identify who is responsible for each of these intervention pieces. So as you see for tier one, it's the classroom teacher who's responsible for tier one. That's, happens in the classroom. And it doesn't mean you're just responsible on your own. We help teachers develop what those supports are. In tier two, it's the classroom teacher, curriculum specialist, or special education teacher. There could be difference and we need to identify that based on the need and based on the kid. So tier two, if you recall, is supplemental support. And I'll go to this RTI, just the academic piece. So you can see here for students not meeting the standard, it's targeted small group intervention delivered by specialists. It depends from kid to kid. Your need may be different. So if you're a kid where you're underperforming in mathematics and it's subskill remediation, that would probably be a math specialist who's going to do that work.
Current math specialist.
They're not hiring.
Yes, yes, the current math specialist. Oh, yes, the current math specialist. So that's what you're asking. Yeah, it's going to be existing staff and it's making more efficient the staff and who they're looking with.
And they'll get, like the classroom teachers, not all of them, but have special training. So they'll get the, the training and additional support.
Yeah, so we frequently, and we've did this when, when response intervention was coming out about 10 years ago was another method to academic intervention services. We did a lot of training at the elementary level. A lot of those teachers have those tools, but it's definitely something we'll continue to train faculty and retrain them on, what are interventions? And then we have the, um, the instructional support teams at every building and that's their role as well. So there's an instructional support team as part of every building and they're designed to look at kids and discuss with classroom teachers, what's the best intervention for this kid? And they track kids' progress. And we'll make that tracking more efficient through the use of our data dashboard over time. We've been using a makeshift tool and a spreadsheet that ends up becoming this gigantically long spreadsheet from year to year as you track students. We're going to make that more efficient over time. That's the team that actually gets together and decides what's the best intervention based on this kid's data, who would be the best one to target that and what are the benchmarks as we go through the year.
And at what point are parents advised if the child, you know, steps down from tier four to tier three or tier three to two? Is it after the state tests come out? Is it after a full year? Is that, like, are there?
That's a great question.
Are there litmus tests throughout the line?
Yeah, so triggered by state regulation is academic intervention services. So that's supplemental intervention. That would be a tier three intervention. Parents have to be notified. Parents do have the right to opt for child out of that intervention if they want.
When you have tier three?
At tier three, the, when you're pulling a kid out of the classroom intensive support for academic intervention. Actually, in response to intervention, we only inform parents if they're being pulled out of a program to go into a support service. So if we're saying, we're not going to go to your encore at Wampus, instead you're going to be doing this intervention service, we notify parents.
But if a child's going to Math Navigator.
Right.
It could very well be happening the period after their math period. It's not something that.
If it's happening in the classroom or if it's a supplemental support that isn't changing a kid's academic program, then we, it just might be something that's in addition to the curriculum. Academic intervention triggers a notification to parents and then if a kid is being exited from the program, we inform parents of that as well.
Isn't tier two similar to tier three?
It's similar, but what that.
Aren't they being pulled from programs also in tier two?
It could be. It could be pulled in or it could be in the classroom. That varies. And again, that's where the instructional support team makes decisions about what's the best intervention for that. Tier three is certainly a more intensive, skill-based intervention that generally happens outside the classroom.
Is the intention for them to move through the tiers, like start by trying tier one, if that doesn't work, then move to tier two?
Exactly right.
That's exactly it.
That's exactly it. You try with the least intervention possible, the minimal amount of intervention. You don't want to pull a kid out of the.
And that's where I see the, the link to the IEPs going down, that you're trying the least different steps.
You're trying to avoid tier four. You're trying to prevent it. So if we can catch that earlier and we have some. So if we can catch that earlier and we have some systematic intervention tools that we know work, I think we're going to see that number go down. I hate to make that prediction, but that's, you know, kids who need support need support. We're not going to deny that.
Especially now that you have the VAEG piece too.
I was going to say, what the, I'm sorry. What are the assessment tools, what is utilized to see how to go through the tiers? So when you, how do you know when a tier is not working? Yeah, when a tier is not working, how often do you check in and what is that process like?
So on the academic side, it's a variety of things. Our state test is certainly one, but that only is happening once a year and that's where response intervention helps. So you have classroom assessments, you have other formative benchmark tools that happen throughout the year. And it could be a teacher observation. That's where a teacher may bring a student to the instructional support team saying, I am noticing this child declining in these skills. And they bring data, they bring student work to show that. So it could be a variety of student work. It tends to be some of these formative assessment tools we have that are implemented on a regular basis.
How do parents find out if their child is phased out of these tiers? And when do they find out?
They find out if it's a tier, whether it's tier two or three, if it's a program, when we're changing the kid's program, once, if we decide to graduate that kid from that program, so to speak, if we don't need the intervention tool based on the assessment, then the parents are notified that they're being exited from the program.
So they're in it until...
Until they show proficiency in whatever the skill was that they needed to work on.
So I have a question for high school, just trying to understand what this looks like. Because you talk about specific skills, but what if there's a particular class that's...
High school's harder and that's where we're still working on doing that. We do have a system in place for academic intervention services. RTI, we haven't really figured out in a rigorous way at the high school level. I think it happens primarily, well, first, if you talk about academic intervention services, we talk about state tests. So you're talking generally about where students are at the eighth grade test. And so going into ninth grade, we have programs in ninth grade for both literacy, for English, and for math. Kids have a program where there's a teacher who works with them. And generally, they come into it a couple of days a week.
But do you have something like, let's say, for math, for English, showing my age?
World language.
Thank you.
Where a more response to, like this tier system works at the high school level is through after-school help from the classroom teacher. That's probably the most singular way. And then there is a pupil personnel team. I look at Gina because I know she's been on that team as a high school assistant principal. And also in your role as a school psychologist at the middle school, you've been on those teams before. So kids with behavioral issues or academic issues will be brought to that instructional support team or at the high school, the pupil personnel team, and things will be put in place. So there is a team looking at them. It could be that you need, you know, we want you to meet with the school psychologist or we want to put in some other plan for you to meet with some specialists at the high school level. But there is a pupil personnel team designed to work with these interventions. Teachers come to those as well. So there may be work with where the pupil personnel team's working with teachers, say, you know, maybe some of these strategies might help in the classroom. So there is a system in place at the high school as well. We're defining it, we've defined it in math and English and we have to work at science and social studies, or languages as well, for academics.
I wonder if going to the block schedules will help in high school, having time for some of this more academic intervention.
To be determined with our scheduling committee at the high school when it gets underway. Yeah, but that would certainly be a piece of this. So we're really happy with this new plan. We think it's more clearly defining it and we spent a lot of time on it this year.
It's amazing. I love the way that it spelled out for everybody. How was it? Is the board supposed to approve this?
I believe the board needs to approve this. I bring the AIS plan to you every two years, so this is supposed to be approved by the board every two years and adopted.
All right. So with that in mind...
This is the new plan I present to you.
Questions? Got a motion to adopt the multi-tier system of support plan nineteen, two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two.
So move. Step down.
All favor? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the dashboard.
Yeah, thanks. Very thoughtful.
Thank you.
It's amazing how we really try to reach every single child at every single level so that they learn.
Yes, I appreciate that.
I think as a board, you've learned so much about the special education department and really seen some of their, I mean, whether it's a financial component to that department or the management of supports for kids or programs this year. I mean, I think we've heard more about special ed this year than any other.
But even general ed students, you know, I've seen through the internships that I've been here for the seniors, they even see now, every child learns differently and if you can connect, it's such an incredible thing.
And there's a lot of talk about people, you know, the kids at the top and the kids at the bottom tend to get a lot of attention. And this will stop us, anybody from falling through the cracks in the middle.
I really like this, just here.
Site for all students.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was wonderful.
Site based.
That's me again. So another report.
That's how that happens.
Easy transition, Tim.
Yes. And this transition does go to the new side of the MTSS plan, which is a TAEAR plan. So the focus of the site-based team this year was on social emotional learning and I've also been meeting with the principals as we have reviewed and we're looking at a district-wide social emotional learning framework. I've presented aspects of that to you in the past. And what we're doing, what we did this year is looking at elements in our social emotional learning framework that align to, in our current program that align with this social emotional learning framework. So the site-based teams have been focused on that work. I just want to point out a couple of quick highlights from the site-based work this year. Starting at Wampus, Peggy's goal for site-based team was to build a school community focused on students with a culture of respect, responsibility, and safety. And I want to highlight under number two, one of the activities, items two and three, where she talks about her monthly community meetings, her weekly community meetings at grade levels. Those meetings are fascinating. Whenever I'm at Wampus during that time, I'll sit in on those. And that's a place where Peggy was able to break students together and get students to recognize their place in the community and get them to bond both as a class and grade level as well as an entire school community. And she has students talking to each other when they bring up issues. She'll literally make them stand and turn to each other in front of their entire class and address each other. Peggy calls on students by name. It's a way she and David get to know all of the students and it really has done exactly what her goal was, which is building respect and responsibility in the school community. And I'm really curious to see first, how she grows this over the years as she continues to do this? And also if the middle school notices any change in students' ability to talk to each other as they go to transition to second grade.
That'd be the true test.
It's the true test, but it's pretty amazing when you watch the way she works with the students in those meetings. It's pretty phenomenal and they're exciting. So I wanted to highlight that. I also wanted to highlight at the high school with Chris Walsh and his work with Challenge Success and doing his deep dive into responding to Challenge Success and their work. And Chris has brought together a lot of different teams focused on how do we respond to what your recommendations are, what the data was showing in the Challenge Success work around students feeling stressed, students reporting, you know, the number of hours they spend on homework, students reporting that they're not getting enough sleep. Chris is taking that on really seriously and a lot of different aspects of his work. He had the data team focus on homework this year and we're going to continue that focus next year. And he did the shadowing students for the day where he did and he had teachers shadow a student for a day. That's a time commitment. And it was risky for teachers to do that, but they learned so much and it really got, it really raised the level and depth of conversations that he was able to have about teachers understanding the student's life at the high school. And that's just some of the work. He had Denise Pope come in and do some additional work from Challenge Success. The I Wish campaign, which he made parents cry at a principal's coffee when he showed what students were saying during the I Wish campaign. He's really taken this on and next year, he will continue a lot of this work, including a look at the master schedule, as Lori pointed out. He really wants to evaluate that and he's preparing to do a community survey and really involve students, parents, and teachers and administrators in that discussion to really analyze the school schedule. Is it the right schedule to meet our current needs?
And that's not the school's start time?
Not the start times, but the school academic schedule from beginning to end, whatever that beginning to end.
It's better to block.
What's going to be happening in the fall?
In the fall, in the building.
He's begun talking about it. So he has laid the groundwork. People know it's coming. I hear teachers starting to talk about it in positive ways in the hall. He's saying, you know, maybe we do need to think about how long a period is. Maybe we do need to rethink the schedule. So he's really grown this very carefully and deliberately, month by month, over the course of this year.
So on that kind of issue, so if next year the decision is, yes, we want to move to a different type of schedule, then it would be for the following year?
Chris and I talked about it. So the following year would be professional development, depending on what the schedule is. So say Lori mentioned a block schedule, that's just one of a million different, well, not a million, but one of many different configurations. You have to think about the teacher's perspective and what their skill set is. If you're used to a teacher teaching in a 45-minute block and suddenly you're going to teach in a longer block, I think we have to talk about how we design units for longer periods of time. So it's not just more of what you would do in 45 minutes, but do it in 90 minutes or an hour. You have to think about lesson design. So we want to devote time to professional development. So the plan would be next year, study the year after professional development with a possible pilot in the last quarter, if we can make some changes in the last quarter to try it and then do some work over the summer and implement it the year after. That's one possible framework, but it, that's just a sketch.
It's not as simple as just, well, cram more content into an hour.
It's not.
It's also student attention.
If it is...
How are you going to keep people's attention? You really have to redesign whole.
You have to think about learning. You have to think, if I have kids for an hour or an hour and a half, how do I design the learning experience for them? And if I only see kids every other day, what does that mean? If I'm not going to see them every day. If we're going to create, say, a different, like an advisory period, what's that going to be? We need to design that work. So we just don't want to change the schedule, say, okay, do the same thing, but in longer blocks. That won't work. That will fail. You have to, we have to train on what it means to go to any type of new schedule and design it. And I think if we spend that time in it, it will be successful. As I just know from experience, we put more, if we front-load that professional learning upfront and do some really careful planning and we know what the outcome should be, then we'll design for that and we'll make it work.
And on workload, sleep, some of the other issues, is it, I guess, reasonable to expect based on the work that's being done on the timeline, that there could be some adjustments next year or is it a longer process than that?
In terms of workload?
In terms of just any changes that would be made to address some of these issues other than...
I think it's going to be longer.
It's going to be longer. So we are, Jen and I decided we want to raise the level of discussion across the district next year on homework practices and grading practices. So that will be part of our opening day presentation where we start to explore those as a district, as a community together of teachers and professionals.
Wasn't there a challenge last year?
There was a math teacher who, Emery Pasquale, who was published.
Yes, so I left you an article and I could resend it to you. Seventh grade teacher did an experiment. It was part of an action research project where she tried, for three weeks, didn't give homework. And she collected data from students and she collected assessment data from that period. And since then, has completely rethought the meaning of homework and has changed homework. So no longer does this teacher formally assign homework or check homework or grade homework or collect it. But it is still a process of, she calls it resources, and teaching kids to be responsible for knowing what resources do you need to help you. And that's changed the entire dynamic in the classroom.
Wasn't there something that, did you see someone with Chris Walsh? Somebody gave...
Are you thinking of the shadowing when Chris Walsh?
They challenged the teachers about homework and not just giving homework for the sake of giving homework and just rethinking.
The data team at the high school looked at it this year and there were some surveys about it and some teachers did do a pilot study with some classrooms. Some teachers volunteered to do that this year. So that has been part of the data team's work and they're going to continue that next year. They did two different surveys. It was met with mixed results in part because of the implementation of it and we're trying to refine it and they're going to continue that work next year. But it's raised the conversation and to be part of it is, let's just at least have discussions about it. And a lot of times when you bring good professionals together with some good research and some good thinking, they'll start to reflect on their practice. And that's what we wanted to do next year is to reflect on homework practices and their grading practices in light of the Challenge Success data.
Right. It's not easy because our students are very successful. So for a teacher, yeah, why and how am I changing what I'm doing that is supporting such success?
And they're prepared for college.
Right? Sure.
It's also rigorous.
Right.
And, you know, if I was successful using, you know, and this is how I learn, why shouldn't everyone learn that way? It's just sometimes challenging our own assumptions about it.
And understanding that it doesn't mean that you're not rigorous anymore. It just means that you're more careful about what you're having students apply their energies toward.
Work smarter, not harder.
Thus, the third topic we're also going to have to look at next year is rigor. So we're going to post three, just simple little things to look at, homework grading and rigor.
Homework grading is rigor.
There's a middle one.
I'm just challenging ourselves to think about what do we mean by rigor? What is a rigorous curriculum? Does it mean more homework means I'm a more rigorous teacher?
Yeah.
Yeah, so when we had discussions about homework and grades, sometimes the word rigor comes out. Well, if I don't give a lot of homework, I'm not seen as rigorous. And so, well, what do we mean by rigor? So we think that word's going to come up, so we might as well put it up.
Get some more in the package.
Yeah, so let's just look at all three of these together. We'll keep you informed about that discussion.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks for your support.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. You'll hear from me one more time.
That's right.
Sorry.
All right.
Superintendent's report. So first, I would be remiss if I did not thank our public for our budget, our successful budget, for supporting our schools, for coming out to vote and for trusting in the Board of Education and the district, that we have a fiduciary responsibility to our public and also that these tax dollars are going toward very successful programs for our children and a school district that has such recognition. So I just appreciate the families who were informed voters and came out to vote and we are also very happy and confident with this budget that we will be able to continue to provide the opportunities and celebrate children like we were able to do tonight. So I want to thank everybody for that. Kelly will talk a little bit more about that, I think. The next thing I'd like to highlight is our Board of Education goals. I gave a more extensive report a number of months back, but to talk about where we are concluding the year with our board goals. And Tim, can you put the board goals up? I can't come guess on this for some reason. The first, it's under my section. The first being excellence in teaching and learning. And since our mid-year review, we have had a great update on our global scholars program. We are looking at global competency and leadership. Tim is going to be presenting our tri-states consortium report at our next board meeting, going to be presenting our tri-states consortium report at our next board meeting, which is very exciting to us. And great work has come out of that, which is really trying to refine the curriculum for year one and two and develop that curriculum for year three. The board has been incredibly supportive of this theme of global competency through our existing programs. We have a lot of leadership experiences that have also been growing, all of our TA programs and peer leader, peer mentor programs, VOC summits, voice circles that are happening at the middle school for leadership, Student Leadership Board, SAIL, VIP. I mean, all of these opportunities are supported through this board goal. Student wellness, also under excellence in teaching and learning. And since we last had a discussion about board goals, we have met with principals to talk about their K-12 curriculum, the emotional curriculum that Tim was talking about. Tim also recently took quite a few of our administrators, Peggy and Dave at Wampus, Angelo at the middle school, and Kristen at the high school, to the tri-state spring conference where the Mark Brackett from the Yale Center of Emotional Intelligence was speaking. And this is a very, this is the next step to this work on emotional intelligence. Mark Brackett's book is coming out in September.
September, yeah.
And, and this is really a different approach for us and sort of helping us to see that work at, you would say, middle and high school levels more, whereas a lot of the other work we saw mostly at an elementary level. District-wide data team, I will go on record as saying that Tim's favorite night of the entire year was showing you the data dashboard and giving you examples of its uses.
Only the surface, just wait.
It was really one of your most exciting moments of the entire year. I was there with you. And that data dashboard, as you said, what I like to see is the interconnectedness of the work that we're doing. And the data dashboard with the multiple
Systems.
Multiple tiered systems of support with RTI and AIS supports, that we are going to start to see that link. And, you know, we are looking at students and progress monitoring and that data dashboard, no matter what tools we use to show their progress, that can capture it for us. Otherwise, it's too hard to capture everything. Fiscal accountability and communications, we have been looking at budget studies. We've been looking at enrollment studies. I'm happy to say that continuing to look at our district enrollment, we have that additional section of kindergarten coming in. We've looked at the per pupil cost review and really tried to grapple with this, and Kelly's going to continue these discussions for us about, so per pupil costs really vary depending upon the school district you're in, whether you have transportation, what your contractual agreements are. So while we started looking at that a little bit last year, we're going to continue to look at that. And then efficiency review, specific departments. We have also, as an audit committee, put together what our charges have been and a finance advisory committee for this year. So I think that that has allowed this board this year, more than any other year, to be very integrated in all of the processes and to have a very precise script as to what it is that needs to be reviewed and when and how. And what I like about that is we have lots of questions that come from board members now about specific areas of the business office that we are reviewing together. And that kind of transparency is very important in a school district. And I think that the board goal of fiscal accountability and communications has led to that. Leadership development and succession planning, this has been really exciting for us from an administrative, looking at administrators, looking at internal candidates, and looking at outside candidates. So for administrators, since our last meeting, Tim will be talking to us about his learning from the executive coaching piloting program. That has been very successful for us. We also have had from our administrators, the board has looked at succession planning together. And in our administrative council, we have been doing consultancy protocols, all of that to build the leadership of the current administration. We've also looked at teachers in the school district. This year I recommended five teachers for administrative programs, three through the FSLA Future School Leaders Program, and two through Stony Brook, who are active. One of them is doing an internship partially with me and partially with Chris Walsh right now. She'll be doing that this summer. That has been very positive. For internal candidates, and looking at outside candidates, when we care about leadership development and succession planning, Tim and Gina went to Columbia to do a job fair recruitment. They learned that all the other schools give out swag. I guess there's a real, you know, usually we just say we have an opening and we get a lot of people coming. Other places give out pencils and t-shirts and recyclable cups.
And little Purell.
And Purell and everything else and candy. But it was nice for them to be a part of that experience and to see how other school districts are trying to recruit from a broader base of applicants.
Good morning.
So quite a bit done on that for your Board of Education goal. Education reform and advocacy, I think, is something that we have touched upon, whether it's through WestPud or through the Lower Hudson Educator Coalition, about what we are advocating for as a school and what bills are being attempted out there in the world. So issues we're supporting right now as superintendents is the right to determine whether schools should be polling places for specific elections, time allowed for employees to, I didn't make that face, time allowed for employees of schools to leave school during paid time to vote. We are supporting that that be taken away because we feel that there is adequate time in a teacher or a school employee's workday to be able to go and vote. It's a terrible disruption to the educational system. And according to the way it is written, we should be given two days' notice if somebody would like their three hours of paid time at the beginning or end of the day. This is, I don't think necessary or constructive for schools. Currently, we're also looking at the regional cost index. That's something that WestPud has been looking at. Also, issues we, so we are, we are supporting a look at that. Issues we are opposing, we are really looking at these, there are two items right now, substantial equivalency, which I brought to the board before, about me going into schools in our school district that are private to give them, to ask our board to certify that it is substantially equivalent. We are opposing that. And the superintendents are also looking at this homeschool children who can participate in district interscholastic sports. That is being proposed right now. And what that means is that we could have 50 kids who are living in our school district, who are attending private schools, but who all want to try out for our basketball team. That might have 13 positions and they all get on. And so our basketball team is no longer an opportunity for kids that are actually registered students in the school district. So we really encourage kids who are either homeschooled or at other schools to partake in our extracurricular activities other than sports that we have, and it's been very successful. Those are not competitive. And that is the distinction that is made when it is a sports.
And it could be homeschool or private.
Homeschool or private school, yeah.
And going back to the three hour at the beginning of the day or end of the day to lead, to vote, none of our staff lives more than three hours away and polling offices are open generally until 9:00 PM, correct?
Right.
So our day ends between like 2:30 and 3:30, and so that they have more than enough time.
Or if you're a night cleaner, you're starting at 2:00 and you've had, right.
And you've had all day.
So there's ample time on either end of the day. It's just that the way it is written, it, they didn't consider schools.
And there's absentee ballots as well. So they always have an opportunity to exercise their rights.
Right. So, I mean, of course, we are going to follow the law, but we are hoping that somebody has their wits about them to make that change for the sake of education. Otherwise, I guess, you know, we have to be closed on every day that schools are voting. There goes the, you know, winter break. I don't know. I don't know how else you do it. So anyway, I think that the board has been really on top of educational reform and advocacy. I think that your work specifically with WestPud has been incredible for us. And I think that we are very in tune with what other districts are thinking and what other school boards are thinking. A lot of those WestPud roundtables have been helpful for that, too, I attended one this year. And the last, security. We really, with our new security manager, with Al Terrace, the parent company who is helping to support our emergency planning, with everything we've done at the bus garage, everything that we've done with cameras and the SROs, all of our drills and reunification plans that are going on right now, I have never felt more confident about the board's support of security and that those goals have, are being achieved on a daily basis here. So overall, fantastic. A-plus through the Board of Education for your board goals.
Thank you. That was really helpful.
And last, well, you know, I like to end on the students. I'm going to end on students and teachers tonight. So first, I want to thank all of the teachers who took part in the fifth grade science night. That happened the same night as the vote. Kathleen Oliveto and her husband Jim Oliveto, who she brings every year to fifth grade science night to hand out t-shirts to kids. Steve Borneman, who ran the program, Dave Mack, who was an administrator there that night, and all of the teachers who ran sessions in the classroom. Those kids had a fantastic time. Thank you to Deb Kay from the Science Department who supports that work. I also want to point out Dana Ferraro, an English teacher, language arts teacher at the middle school, recently was published in a National Council of Teachers of English publication. She wrote an article called, "Whose Classroom Is It Anyway?", how I was reminded of this. And this was inspired by Project Based Learning Workshop that she completed with Andrew Taylor and Dwayne Smith.
And some other middle school teachers.
Yep. So accolades to her.
Yeah. We'll share that with you in September when it's published.
Student highlights, although I had to miss it because I was at another event, Northern Westchester Hospital President's Council, the Junior Leadership Council of Students, our students who were at Westchester are, they are at it, Arvadi, Julia Barnett, Ben Kahn, and then Alan Chang was there for part of it. They have brought on Sophie Stumacher for next year to join that group as well. And they really spend the year doing everything. They're going from learning about operating rooms and physical therapy and rehab and wound care and radiation therapy, and then they pick a project. And they'll work on that project throughout the year. Last year, it was emotional wellness. They celebrate with different groups like Neighbor's Link. They are very integrated in the community, this group of kids. And the way the group runs is you stay on it for your years that you are here. And when you leave, like Alan Chang is leaving, you tap another Byram Hills student to go over there and be a part of this organization. So congratulations to them because they meet monthly. I get to come once a year and to hear all of the accolades of our students, and I do look forward to doing that again next year. More accolades from science research, if you can believe it. Ethan Jacobs, just being a Google, just being, is a Google Science Fair Global finalist. He's one of 20 students in the entire world to receive this honor, and only one of three Americans to be awarded. And he's going to go to Google headquarters in California to compete with others for $50,000 and as well as other prizes. I happen to be in Ethan's room with Tim on science research night. He was absolutely outstanding. So we wish you luck and congratulations to you.
Good question.
Do you remember what his project was again?
Yeah, it was about, I could tell you layman's terms. He was studying river otters and he was looking at different bodies of water to see a depletion of these otters.
See if you can map them using DNA from water samples, because they're hard to actually count and find.
To find, right.
And then what's the transfer to that to other species that are hard to track? Can you use DNA samples in the water to map the population?
So you can only imagine why Google thinks that's pretty interesting.
It's like, wait, we can map something?
More intel.
River otter.
Yes, exactly. And then we have more science research. We have three seniors, Samantha Bruzies, Renner Quitkin, and Brent Pearlman, who qualified to compete in the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair, they call that ISF, in Phoenix, Arizona. Renner won third place in translation medical science, and Brent won fourth place in the microbiology category. I don't even know how these kids are going to move on in their lives past all of these accolades. Like, is everything else just going to be a sheer disappointment? But, I mean, it has been pretty incredible. I'd like to say that I sent an announcement out last week, and although I will be talking about it on the 25th at our board meeting, I wanted to let the community know that we have our four teacher recognition recipients for this year. This has been a tradition here in Byram Hills since 1981. There are about 135 teachers who have been recognized for just particular service to children and contributions to our schools. And this year, I am proud to say that at the elementary level at Coman Hill, it is Leslie Goldfarb. At Wampus, it is Kathleen Oliveto. At the middle school, you know librarian Barbara Barthelms. She has really done a lot of work with our kids. And Byram Hills High School, to David Hubbs, our English teacher. So as is the tradition, we will recognize them next week, and then they will present, not present, they will speak to our faculty. It's inspirational and amazing. So we're looking forward to that and congratulations to them.
Thank you.
And my last thing is just some upcoming calendar events. We do have the Thursday, our prom event that is happening at the high school. The community is invited to come and watch our kids, hopefully not with umbrellas, on our step and repeat carpet as they go off. They're very excited for prom. We also have
It's supposed to pour.
Yeah. It's not going to pour. I put in word.
It's going to be in a boat.
That's true. That is true. Even more the reason why there shouldn't be a boat.
The weather may never get it right. So may they not get it right this.
That's right. I'm hoping it ends early. We have our graduation next week at Purchase College on Tuesday at 5:00 PM. We have a retirement dinner next week, grade five moving up ceremony and eight moving up ceremony on June 24th, and our last Board of Education meeting on the 25th, right before the last day of school on the 26th. No rest for the weary. The board will be back for July 10th, I think it is, for our organizational meeting. And the 11th and the 12th, we will be at our administrative retreat. So lots of work to come, but exciting end to the year. And that is all for me, just that little bit.
60% chance of rain.
There you go.
There's a 40% chance of sunshine.
Okay, that's right.
That's right. And Tim.
Okay, I'm gonna go up here if you don't mind.
Jen, just one more time to me.
4:30.
4:30. Oh, and your caps and gowns are in Lynn's office.
I took them out and left them in.
I forgot.
Okay, so I want to present to you an update on the executive coaching pilot program. If you'll recall from the fall, you allowed me to go forward with the pilot program. And it was also, as Jen mentioned earlier, supporting the board goal of leadership development and succession planning. And what I did was enact a pilot program where we allowed administrators to volunteer for an executive coach. And I call this a good to great coach. There are coaches who come in for deficiencies. If an administrator is showing deficiencies, we don't really use coaches in that capacity here. But for a good to great, so we have good people, we do meet with them regularly, we have monthly meetings as district office with administrators. But how else can we allow people opportunities to grow? We have several supports in place through our administrative council meetings, through our retreat, and our regular support systems through monthly meetings, and committee work that we work with administrators on. But what are some other ways? And we went forward with a pilot project, and I want to give you an update on that. So we'll start with what is executive coaching as a review. An executive coaching is really an opportunity for a manager of an organization to have opportunity to work with someone to develop their skills as a leader and a way to be reflective on themselves in their leadership position. And that's sort of a general term of what an executive coach does with a manager. So the benefits of executive coaching, according to the literature, is that it increases self-confidence and self-awareness, that it refines their skills and develops new ones, that it improves problem-solving skills and helps them provide new insights into specific situations they might be dealing with, as also themselves and others in the organization. So overall, the goal of it is to develop the capabilities, and the literature does show that it does develop capabilities of some leaders. So what did I do this year is I had eight volunteers to participate in executive coaching that began last summer. And in order to analyze this, I provided a written survey that had both Likert scale questions as well as open-ended questions. And then I followed up after I analyzed that information. I designed some focus questions and I did individual interviews with each person in depth to dig a little deeper. And then based on all that data, I took it and spread it out as any good researcher would do, and did some deductive analysis and coded the data. And based on my perspective, came up with some themes and some findings. And I'm going to share that with you to show you, in addition to what we find in the literature, what happened in practice as we did this pilot. So first, I want to show some of the quantifiable information from the Likert scale. Overall, on all these graphs, you're going to see that on a Likert scale of one to five, from strongly disagree to strongly agree, everyone reported either agree or strongly agree, level four or five on it, improving their leadership skills, gaining insight into their strengths and weaknesses. They believe that their competencies have improved and that they actually changed some behaviors as a result. And a few more things that I noticed, that it impacted their work with their teachers, that it gave them new perspectives, new insights, and also increased their accountability. And you'll see on two of those graphs, there were more agrees than disagrees. It's a slight variation. And when I actually dug deeper on those, take the accountability question, for example, the reason someone's reported agree as opposed to strongly agree is because they already felt they were accountable toward their goals and didn't feel there was any area for growth. And while their coach focused on that a bit, it didn't seem that coaching per se helped them. And that's, I think, the distinction at least some of those questions. So what did I find overall? So what I did with my analysis, and the caveat is that this is through my lens, so any type of research of qualitative data is through my perspective. So what I did is I looked at all the data, I coded it, and I came up with some themes. And I have three areas that I call three key domains that I believe added value to the leader's professional growth. I call, the first one, self or looking inward, where this is where I believe the administrators looked into their own actions and to their own knowledge. I also, then, another domain was they looked outwards. This is looking at others and increase their knowledge about other people and recognize the relationship between the relationship between the people and their goal attainment. And then the other one is the greater good, or looking at the organization, that leaders connected their actions to the district mission, and it also created a time and place where they could work specifically on their goals and achieving their goals. So those were the three domains that I categorized the data into. Another researcher may come up with other categories, but that was my lens. Now, what I'm going to do within each of those, I broke those down into specific elements under each of those three domains. What I found was in self, three areas grew as themes. Difficult conversations, becoming more aware, self-aware, and developing confidence. Self-awareness and confidence is also in the literature, but the surprising one for me was handling difficult conversations, and I'll unpack that a little bit. That I didn't expect, and a lot of the participants spoke to that. It became a theme or an element when it happened, when it reoccurred multiple times from several other participants. Under others, it was on strengthening relationships, and it was on recognizing different perspectives. And then on the organization communicating and strengthening their vision, focusing on their goals, and developing skills for planning, being strategic in their planning. Reflection spanned everything, so reflection was constant within every element. So instead of making that a separate theme, I found that as an element that spanned all of these elements. So I'm just going to highlight a few. I pulled some specific quotes that I thought represented each of these elements, and I just want to make a highlight, but feel free to ask me about anything should something pop out to you. But under the handling difficult conversations, what's interesting there is that individuals spoke about the need, you know, this just kept coming up, that several of the participants spoke in the need to have their coach help them with difficult conversations, whether it was, and generally, it was with their faculty and achieving their goals. It's this conversation where people are maybe just resisting doing something. And how do you approach that? And people really wanted to work toward that and not just ignore it. And recognizing in that quote I highlighted, in order to grow, I must do things differently. And that, sometimes that's being, that's uncomfortable for me. And that was something they were able to reflect with on their coach of how they can look inward about themselves, and that feeling uncomfortable is sometimes okay as a leader, and I need to find ways to manage that. Also, this idea of self-awareness. This is this idea of their actions, what are my actions that need to change in order to make progress towards something? And in the specific quote that I highlighted, this particular administrator was looking at her evaluation from her supervisor previously and really looking at that and working with her coach to help her improve on some of these areas. I really thought that was worth highlighting because our entire system is based on feedback. And we really value feedback here. And when we write evaluations, we take those really seriously, whether it's administrators writing for administrators or for faculty. We value those written words and the conversations and the dialogue to support people in achieving those. It's one thing to give someone some evaluation and some feedback, it's another thing to say, we're really going to support you in achieving that. And it's a systems piece. And I thought that it was captured in that quote and also in a lot of the participants' response. So that self-awareness was important in this data. Developing confidence came up constantly, and that's also in the literature. And they found that. And the thing about confidence is that quote I highlighted, it's not just being confident for confidence sake. I mean, I think we hire competent people, we want people to be confident in their work, and we support that. But that confidence leads to taking on bigger challenges. And when I'm thinking about global scholars, when I'm thinking about next year, Chris Walsh really wanting to look at the master schedule, when I look at taking on homework issues, grading issues, those are big challenges. You have to be confident as a leader when you're pursuing big challenges. And if we're going to continue to move toward really ambitious goals as a district, we need administrators and leaders that are confident in the work that they're doing. So that, I thought, was an interesting finding. Deliberate practice is actually defined as, you know, if I'm trying to become a better golfer, I can't just practice the stuff I'm good at, I got to practice the things that I'm not good at. When I was playing tennis, I had a really terrible backhand. So what did I do? I just tried to run to the side of the court, so I could only do forehand, and my opponent quickly figured that out and beat me in a second. I didn't practice my backhand. If I wanted to become a better tennis player, I had to practice my backhand, and I didn't do that. So deliberate practice is knowing specifically what skills will help you grow, and then practicing that and working on it. And participants talked about it a lot, that their coach helped them with the things that they weren't, that they needed help with, the areas of growth, and then they would practice it and they would reflect with the coach on those issues. That, to me, was really an important highlight. That came up a lot in the data. Strengthening relationships was also not just about people getting along, but relationships in the sense that it's helping you advance your goals. And that recognizing that my relationship with each person in my department or my building is really valuable, and I have to value that in terms of having a strong relationship to work with that person to achieve my goals on a very individual basis. We talk about this with, on a bigger level, at our, at the retreat last year and also at our administrative council meetings about a human-centered design approach. That's where you can't ignore the fact that when you're trying to do an initiative, that you're actually working with real people that might have very different needs. So when I'm thinking about us taking on homework, for example, we can't just do a blanket, this is what we're going to do for homework, everyone go. We have to really work with every individual, their individual needs, and what their concerns may be, or where they are in that process of reflecting on homework, and really recognize the individuals that we're dealing with. That helps us achieve our vision and our goals if we really look at the individuals in it. And that was coming out a lot in this data. And just a couple more things, I'll talk about the continued focus on goals. Really, what I was hearing a lot about is not just about a bifurcated piece of, did I achieve my goal or not, or looking at my goals as a checklist, but looking at progress toward my ambitious vision. And how do you measure progress toward a vision? So if we think about our mission statement as our mission as a district, how do you measure progress toward mission? That's harder than just, I'm going to implement this math program and are we doing it or not doing it. But what's the quality of the work of implementation? And that's what I was hearing under this reflection. And finally, under developing skills, you can see here a lot of different types of skills, but all these skills really related to that strategic work as a leader and being strategic, whether it's thinking about self-correcting, whether it's thinking about being systematic in my work, whether it's thinking about being strategic, but really developing individuals' goals, skills, to work toward how you're thinking about going forward with your work to attain your goals. So all that data is just a snapshot of what we came to. So my conclusions are that executive coaching certainly adds value, not just to a leader's skills and knowledge, but also toward our progress toward the district mission. I think that's, the goal attainment was something that surprised me, and they, the focus on goals and the practice of connecting my actions as a leader to my work that supports the district mission was something very interesting that grew out of it that I didn't expect. I think it's a real investment in professional capital. Professional capital is more than just the investment in skills and knowledge, but it's, it encompasses also the relationship aspect and that decision-making and reflection piece of it. It's an innovative approach to strengthening our leadership program, and obviously aligns to, I believe, the leadership development goal that the board has. So my recommendation is that we continue to offer executive coaching as a valuable experience if the board feels that it's worth investing in.
I guess two questions. Who would you recommend it for, just given that it's costly and so it can't be too wide? And then the second question is, did some things come out of this exercise, like handling difficult conversations or planning, that could then be taken, not in a coaching format, but more in a professional development format, whether it's in a faculty meeting or a separate PD or whatever the right format, just to get it out to a lot of teachers and staff that might benefit from the same development of skills but may not have coaches?
Yes, and to answer the last question first, I think so. I think that this will feed into the work we do as an administrative council. So I'm planning our receipt next, or our retreat this summer, I'm thinking about some of the learning from this as we go forward with some really ambitious initiative next year on taking on questioning our homework and grading practices, pretty big. And what can we learn from this? What can we help the entire administrative team with? What are the skills needed to do this work and learning from this? There may be difficult conversations. For those of you who are learning about that, what are you learning? How can we have difficult conversations? So I think the elements in here will be applicable to us that we're going to be talking about at the retreat, and we'll talk about throughout our council meetings next year. In terms of going forward with this, what I would probably do is set an amount of budget toward this. And this is the amount that we'd spend and ask for volunteers each year and just stay within some acceptable framework of a budget. So when I think about the cost of this, with eight participants, I believe the rate, it turned out to average around a little over $4,000 per person, maybe even around, I think it was $4,000. It could be less, actually. I think it was 3,500 per person, which I think is a small investment when I think about what they were getting out of that per administrator. So we could shrink that, I could come up with something that's reasonable within our framework, and I'll work, certainly work with Jen and Kelly on a budget for this and keep it within that framework. And then open it up to volunteers every year and just rotate through people. When I've talked to people whether they would want to continue next year, two of the eight said that they feel they have a lot to work on from what they learned. Four others want to continue and two haven't decided. So if we were to go forward, that's about the numbers I would deal with. I would say on any given year, we would have probably, I had about a third of our administrative team this year, which to me is a lot. I think probably five people in any given year would probably be an acceptable number. We would have to think about that.
Specifically the administrators?
Yes, for administrators, right. This is just for leadership, for management positions.
Tim, I mean, I think this reflection component for leadership is critical. And one thing that came out of this, this developing confidence piece. When you're confident, you take risks. And you take risks to improve the programs we have or whatever, whether it's a risk like science research or something else, obviously, that's where some of these great programs come out of, taking those risks. I think it's, so I think it's wonderful. Being involved in some of this historically, personally, sometimes it gets, you get any feedback from people that were going through, they said, oh, that was my session? Like, sometimes people, you know, don't feel so good about blocking out the time to go through those sessions, like, oh, it's a week later. How often were the, what were the, can you give us a quick understanding of what the program is like?
Sure, sure. So overall, it was about one session per month for about an hour. Now, it did vary. And one, one person said that they really only met about 45 minutes, and that was about all that person could attend to, where another person would call their coach on the weekends sometimes. And just like, you know, an update on this, and I really need some advice going into this meeting on Monday. And meetings would go an hour and a half. But it was generally about once a month. A couple people front-loaded the coaching and did a couple sessions per month in the first two months, and then a little bit later and skipped it sometime later on in the year. So it did vary based on the individual need and their relationship with their coach.
The cost structure on this, obviously, being expensive, but, you know, picking this up somehow through the management too, a portion of this, meaning, you know, you can almost kind of have these coaching sessions within your own, you know, kind of using each other to bounce off those same coaching techniques. A lot of this is about self-reflection and strategies of what I like to call role practicing, which is what you're doing with these coaches sometimes, which helps you with those difficult conversations. So all I'm saying, I'm certainly supportive of this. I'm just saying that it is extremely costly, and maybe if there was some takeaways, we can develop some type of internal training programs that come out with some of the same benefits, so.
Yeah, something we can certainly consider. I think, you know, weighing between internal and external. So we meet a lot with administrative team, and I think Jen can speak to that and Gina can, in terms of our work with folks. It is a different mindset in working with an outside perspective. And I try to also match up coaches' strengths with the needs of the person. We had various coaches, from a couple who were former superintendents within the Westchester area. There was someone from Columbia University who does coaching, who's an education professor. There was someone who runs her own innovative organization in the West Coast, is an innovator and a design thinker. So really varying types of expertise. And I think, you know, what, what I found the benefit was, and the most successful coaches were those where the match was really good, and it was an outside perspective. And I don't think this is something that's a lifer, you know, it's not something someone would do all the time and forever. I think it's intensive for a year or two, and maybe there's a cycle to it that makes it affordable, and maybe we look at a model that is less expensive. And most of my coaches went through BOSIs, which means I save money, there's only one outside of the BOSIs network. So we do get eight back on that, and they go really cost-effective. So there could be cost-effective ways, and also just really putting a cap on it and minimizing it.
Mike, I'm listening to what you're saying, and part of what each person, each administrator is learning with their coach is something that's not necessarily the whatever method, right? They're learning and it is coming through to their faculty, to other administrators in their practice. So it's nothing tangible, right? So you can't say, oh, this is this particular thing that you learned. But what I'm hearing from you is, how can we maybe, as we're evolving with this, look at what they are learning and be a little bit more explicit in sharing those learning opportunities with the other administrators? Very similar to what we do with our consultancy protocols.
Like mentoring, huh?
Right, like a mentoring thing. But like, what, what is it? What were the pieces that you feel that you learned in this that you could share with us as an administrative group?
That's my question about, are there nuggets around certain skill sets that then could be shared more broadly?
We could make a manual, maybe, of like...
Well, it's the way we live. You know, you go somewhere and you learn, oh, this is the Asian society framework, and now we're, we came back with this thing that we can all speak about, and it's very tangible to us. And so far, at this infancy stage, it's not there yet, but I see how it could be.
I wonder if we could make some type of manual based on, like, these are the nuggets learned from this group, and it like, and each year can be added on to so that people can just look through it and say, oh, this difficult conversation, this is how they approached it, you know, just seeing other people.
We do that with teachers with courses. You know, you're taking courses and you have to demonstrate your knowledge from this course with a peer, with an administrator, and they have these meetings where they sit down and say, I took these course, this course, and these are the pieces from it that are applicable to my practice.
Even difficult conversations with students?
Yeah.
And students?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So at my company, we do, you know, a lot of leadership training, and it's always generally very costly. We do a lot of follow-up with them to, you know, it's corporate, so they always want to see ROI, right? So we do a lot of follow-up, like, we do check-ins after a month, two months, three months, four months. How are you actually using what you learned? And I think that's also, that would be very helpful for us as a board. It's costly, and, you know, we want to make sure that people are not just, you know, you tend to go through these trainings, you're very gung-ho and excited about what you've learned, and then a few weeks later, you're back into your old routine.
I really think that's a good point. And I struggle over this because I think that, first of all, we absolutely positively want to invest in our leaders, and we absolutely positively want to invest in professional development. And I think that I'm not surprised that people thought highly of the experience and want to do more of it. And I think that there's got to be a place for it. So I think that, I totally think you're thinking about it in a great way. The balance is that because we're a public school district with taxpayer money, and this is a little bit of a layer beyond what would be sort of more traditional professional development, there just has to be a little bit more, I guess, I guess, care taken to figure out like, what is that right bucket of resources to provide to this? And I think that the way to think about it is, let's say we're $30,000 in a year, so that's $30,000 taken away from like broader professional development of teachers, and so is that a positive trade-off? Is it not a positive trade-off? That's kind of, right, that's kind of the thought process. But the year-two thing is interesting, meaning that if you have some that don't continue in year two, to really, I guess, touch base with them at some interim point, maybe it's halfway through the year, to see whether the lessons learned really did stand the test of time, or it was one of those things where you learn something and then you kind of forget. I think that would be interesting to know in order to make that decision. Doesn't mean you don't have to do none of this next year, but you just, but if you keep it really small and contained and then get more data to that effect to see...
Yeah, or maybe we say, okay, if you're interested, it's got to be a two-year commitment. Because that's what we found to be the point where you actually are able to put this into practice in your life.
Which could come from us researching even more. You know, when I think about budgets and a budget for professional development for teachers, we have not had a budget for professional development for administrators. Right? Like, this is, and conceptually, it, or financially even, if you probably look at the dollar per hour value of either a professional who may come and speak to 25 people for an hour, and what that, the exorbitant cost of that professional versus the continued progress over time through the course of an entire year, that's where I see the value. We are having a person that isn't coming in because they're renowned and giving me one hour that I then... one hour that I then have to try to structure the rest of my life from.
Right.
This is consistent practice and that's what we know to be the most effective.
Well, it's interesting in the comparison with teacher professional development and administrator professional development, we have taken that all along through our administrative council. So we know from the literature on teacher professional development that one-shot workshops don't work, they don't stick. You know, the best way for professional development is embedded, they call it, embedded professional development, where you're learning, that's embedded in your practice and you're reflecting on it in practice. Executive coaching scene is embedded, it's embedded in real practice and most of the participants talk about the real issues and the real work that they were facing. As you saw in those quotes, they were really dealing with issues in real time. And it is an embedded professional learning. So I think the, the literature would speak to it having long-term impact based on what we know from teacher professional development.
I guess having that hope in between, you're getting to, you know, go hard in practice and then come back and talk about it, what, you know, did you use it?
Right. And the coaches would hold up some, how did that go? So what did you do? And there was a lot of that type of follow-up. People felt accountable to their coach. Since I had gone through it in the past, I sort of knew that too. I would feel like, oh, I gotta do my homework for my coach, I gotta think about it. It forces you to think about it. So like embedded professional development in the classroom, like our action research course, so we offer an action research course that I teach with, work with a teacher, teachers volunteer to participate in that. We ask them to do research in real time in their classroom and reflect on it. So they're reading current literature, they're trying a new practice and then they're coming back and they're analyzing data with us. That's embedded and that does have long-term impact on the change because they're seeing the impact in real time. And that's what I was hearing.
One or two years?
Uh, one year, this was for one year.
You did it?
I did it for, I did it the year before, I did the pilot as I was thinking about it, so it was my way to pre-pilot something and just to understand what it was before I came to you asking if we could do it with administrators, I wanted to know what that was.
So it sounds like it becomes habit, it becomes a habit. Instead, the practice ends up becoming a habit, the more you're held accountable.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm finding. And people would set aside time to work on this and it gave them time, think time and that was part of the feedback as well, that really forced me to think in the structure that, you know, we tried to with our meetings with individuals, this was just one added layer to it to help someone develop skills that hopefully become long-term skills that then do have that ripple effect of long-term work with their own teachers and with each other as an administrative team.
That deliberate time is important. Having been a building administrator.
Having that time.
There's, that reflective time is very difficult because you're in operation mode a lot. You have to be very strategic about setting aside the time.
Right.
To be reflective, to think about the different constituents and then what do you want and where do you see this going and what is your vision?
It was forced reflection, it was a time they had to.
We should do the, you know, the shadowed student for the day, everyone should shadow one of our struggling administrators. It is interesting. I had...
Wear comfortable shoes.
Christina Wilson shadowed me for a day recently and she told me that, she wrote to me that night and said she was just absolutely exhausted. And I said, well, you know, it's, it becomes part of the work that you do, right? It's our routine.
So what I'm hearing, what am I hearing?
I think what you're...
I summarized what you told me or...
I think they're concerned. I think we're excited about the program, but...
I think, you know, I think also, you know, I mean, I get it, administrators are in a way removed from the day-to-day student learning, but I guess, you know, what I'm struggling with, the expense of it, I understand the value of it for sure, but it does feel to me removed from the day-to-day teaching of the students. It's, it's self-reflection and self-growth, which I get, helps overall, but it is expensive and I guess I just, you know, public school, I don't know how we fully justify it.
I think that you've approached this in the most thoughtful way humanly possible, seriously, in terms of the idea and in terms of trying to really monitor what happened and try to like learn something from it. I think, yeah, I think the question is, is there a measured way, a pretty contained way with a, you know, reasonable amount of funds that isn't excessive to do it for another year and then see what happens and see if it has longevity or if people are off, or is it just not appropriate? And maybe we think about it and decide at the end of June, I'm assuming you need to know, going into next year, right? So you've said it.
What if we don't take anybody new and just have these people go through their second year so we have a longer case study?
Because we don't have a huge turnover at the administration level, so.
Tim, what are you recommending? What do you feel like you want to have?
So from hearing the conversation, I would enjoy another year with those who are continuing next year and I wouldn't bring on anyone new. We have a few that already said they didn't want to continue, but I have at least five who will go forward. And if I can show some more data and making it a connection to how does it expand and permeate into work that does eventually have an impact on teacher learning and student learning? And if we can try to make out some of that connection to how we can embed this into other work that seems like it's not just a personal piece, but that it has other impact beyond just one zone.
I'm curious, the two people who said no, without continuing, what their reasoning, was it the time commitment or...
I think a little was time, but it was also they felt they, they didn't need it anymore, that it was valuable in the moment, they didn't say it wasn't it. But that they, they feel like it's embedded enough in the work they do and particularly their work with either me or with Jen or with Gina. And some people have said, you know, some of my work, the coach was just replicating the work I do with me or Jen. Some people found their coach did take them and gave them even more time to go a little bit beyond that. That's just an understatement.
You know, it's interesting, if, if these executive coaches stemmed out of Teachers' College and they all subscribed to the same approach to helping administer, or to looking at organizational leadership, for example, we would probably all feel very differently, right? But it's, because it's not a prescribed program that there are...
You're probably right, yeah.
Yeah, that's where we're still in the let's find out more phase, right?
I mean, I understand your point about how if you get a speaker to come in, some speakers could be very expensive and it's a couple of hours, interesting, but doesn't have a lasting impact. This, this could be more, this is a more structured way to get people into really helpful patterns of leadership that, so I see the value. It's just balancing that with the...
Well, I think the unknown is what exactly they're talking about. Like if, you know, what are specific examples of how they're utilizing these coaches or, you know, if, if you had three administrators who sat, which we don't want, the point of the executive coaching is not for them to, you know, come forward and sort of talk to everyone about what they've shared confidentially with the, with the coach. But if they came and said, you know, there were, you know, five, five major points this year that I utilized this coach and were able to target for you the aspects of their leadership that they thought were supported and why, it would feel very different to us. But I think because it's confidential and because we don't know that, it's hard to wrap your head around what that looks like. And because it's not a TC program, that's also hard for the board to... I, I have to say that I have had conversations, I see the value of this so much more than taking a course, which could be supported by the Board of Education in a capacity, or even that guest speaker. I mean, this is a, this is a skill that isn't being embedded. So I'd love for us to be able to move forward with this group, get more data, start to look at it. I mean, Byram Hills is known to create what Byram Hills wants and perhaps are looking at this, could develop this TC thing I was talking about. We could design what we want that to look like for administrators.
Right.
Maybe he's got to come cautious. Who else is doing this program? Is anybody else doing this?
And you mean other school districts?
Yeah.
So coaching, coaching is, has, is, is used by other districts and through BOSI's, there are people who are coaches. A lot of times it's a deficit model. It's like I have a struggling administrator and they need help, can you meet with them to give them some skills and knowledge to help them from struggling?
So we're taking...
That's how districts may use it.
Exceptional.
I'm trying to use this in a different model, not a deficit model. A deficit model here, we handle and we, you know, we nurture and build people up or we don't keep people who aren't successful here. And we try to do strong, you know, we have, it's hard to get tenure here, so we make that our rigorous step and hopefully it'll get to that stage. Would we ever use it in that? If we ever had to, we would use coaching in that capacity. So this is a different mindset of coaching that is used in industries to some degree. With again, you know, I showed some of the literature and the literature is, recognizes there needs to be more research in this area. But what I did show were some of the findings from that. I don't know anyone using them in this capacity. It would say definitely... Definitely companies do.
Yeah, because it doesn't feel like a public school.
I don't know so, but we like to be proactive. So to me, this is a proactive model and that leadership development is something we are serious about. We should find some innovative models for leadership that go outside. We might have to seek out a business model sometimes to...
That confidence has given you the risk to take this on.
Because I'm standing, I'm wondering where I am at right now, my confidence meter.
Well, I think also framing it.
You don't know, Mike.
Framing it with the board goals of succession planning also, of looking at administrators who are in our system and how we can better support them so that they, I mean, many of us have had many roles. Fortunately, we all came in this cohort where we worked together, but...
So I guess I would suggest we do one of two things. Either we can say, yep, makes sense to do the same people again next year, or we can say, let's think about it, it's late, it's been a long meeting and come back to it in the next meeting because I think we should definitely figure out whether we've ordered or not and in what capacity by the end of the year so that you can plan and organize around it. But I would sort of take everyone's temperature to figure out which of those two.
Yeah. The latter, I think that's good, yeah.
And definitely do not see this as, this program not being, us not seeing this as a success. We absolutely see it as successful, it's just...
Yep, I understand that.
It's new, so we want another year of data.
Yeah, and I think like what you were starting to say, Jen, is true. I think it's because it's not, it's not like a set program that everybody's partaking, it's individual, it's kind of unique, so it is a little bit hard for us, I think, to fully grasp, although certainly the benefits make sense, but it's, it's so individualized, it's just a little bit different.
Right. Yeah, and I think that's something for us to think about is how could we do that? And the second year for me would give us time to think about, how do we...
Or how can BOSI's do that?
Whether it's through BOSI's or...
Right, how does BOSI's look at these executive coaches that they are housing and distributing to...
And that's interesting because it did come out of, the initial idea for this came out of BOSI's trying to build up the executive coaching work three years ago. And that's where I started to talk with some people about this idea and I brought it to Jen and talked about it. And regionally, it sort of dwindled down and people didn't really grasp onto it. I think it's valuable and I, from my own experience and from looking at some of this data, but I, I understand the concerns before since it's a little bit unusual. I think trying to find a framework for it where it maybe has, it is legitimized in some concrete way about here, some elements that are consistent within some differentiation for individuals, but that we sort of know what the expected outcome is and maybe it isn't, maybe there's some confidentiality, but there needs to be some reporting of outcomes for us for some accountability.
I'd also be interested in tracking the two who dropped out.
They're gonna be fine.
No, 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 but just see how much are they putting into practice versus the people who are taking part in the second year?
And I know it's embedded with them, I mean, I know because I know them and I know each of the individuals and as Jen said from my own work with all of the participants, I've seen really amazing benefits that do transcend. But it's just my, the question that is before us is how do we account for that as a Department of Education who's allocating funds for it? I get that piece and that's something for us that is an exercise that could be, be interesting for us to think about if we feel we can do it.
And these coaches are not necessarily educators, right? They're, they're, that's not really their background.
They all have worked, so some of them, as I mentioned, are former superintendents who have worked in education. One's a professor at Columbia who's in education and the other one who works in industry works within the field of education and consults with education.
So why, sorry, excuse my ignorance, but why are they more equipped to be able to handle these areas of personal growth than anybody else?
All of them have been trained in executive coaching, so there is executive coaching training and all of them have had executive coaching training in some regard. Yeah, and have done, you know, the outsiders who are outside the superintendent room, through BOSI's, they did coaching, they did training on executive coaching through BOSI's. The ones that were outsiders have all been trained and one is actually certified in executive coaching as a, as a trainer of executive coaches.
Okay. It's so funny because I think, which is the truth, if this were described as a BOSI's program that we were signing up for, for $25,000 a year, so that it would sound very different. And that's exactly what it is.
But we just have to, we just have to like break away from that mindset to...
But also there have to be other, other components to it. I, I think that what, everything that's been said here really flashes it out.
It does, yeah.
In a way that it needed to be, yeah.
It's just new, so we're being mindful.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, it's, it is, and I really want to emphasize that, I think the way you've approached this has been as thoughtful as you, as anybody could possibly be, so we appreciate it and it's good to...
I want to be as transparent as possible.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, I like the honest feedback too.
And I think we should definitely put it on the agenda for the next meeting, continue the discussion and figure out which one to go.
Thank you. Thanks for taking the time.
That's great.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, let me quickly, I was late. Just want to, again, as Jen said, thank the community for the support of the budget. We had an approval rating of votes, yes votes of 84%. We had an increase in total votes, votes cast this year, about 15% increase, additional 73 votes compared to the prior year. Majority of our votes came in the Armunk area, 73%. Bedford and Pleasantville were both 13% of the total votes. In terms of hours that votes were cast, no surprise, between 5:00 and 9:00 PM, over about 40% were cast between those hours. So, you know, later in the day, we had a lot of votes towards the end of the day. In terms of age group, from 40 years old to 59 years old, that was about 62% of our votes, so the majority of our votes are in that age range. Again, not really a surprise.
Forty-two to...
Forty to 59.
Forty to 59.
Okay. And then if you add in the 60 to 69, that's about 75% of our votes. And then finally, Moody's, they issued their annual comments for the school district and again, kept us in our AAA rating. We're one in nine school districts in New York State, over 730 school districts in the state, so we're one in nine that have that credit rating of AAA, so something to be very proud of.
So they updated it?
Yeah, good. Every year they, they take our audit and redo the numbers.
Yeah, that's, it's really something to be proud of.
Absolutely. So that's it for me.
I think they reported a couple of interesting things, not to tron on about this too much right now, but still, I was surprised just to see the population growth in their report, which was kind of interesting. And demographics were showing, you know, just super positive and whatever, so kind of a divergent from a slightly declining enrollment, but yet a slightly increasing population, which I just found to be slightly strange.
Yeah, the only negative being the drop in assessed value.
But yes.
Thank you, Kelly.
All right, so board reports. The other thing I wanted to very briefly mention is the science research tonight was really exceptional. It was run pretty much entirely by the students, great speeches, really amazing presentations and I think just the faculty of that program deserved, it's a tremendous amount of credit for the work that they do, so.
Absolutely. You have 118 students signed up for fall. Wow, we'll be in that program.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
Anybody else have any?
I'll be very brief. We had an athletic advisory council meeting on last Friday. Number of things were brought up, but the one thing that I'd mention is the baseball team was awarded the Robert Clements Sportsmanship Award by Westchester County Umpires Association. And Rob Kastag, number one, I think it's, you, you have teams, you can have winning records, we have all these accolades of tremendous achievement by our athletes, but to get, you know, a sportsmanship award, I think is something we can always control, not how many games you can win and to have umpires vote, you know, our team to be, you know, top in sportsmanship, I just think it was a big tribute to the coaching staff and the leadership in athletics to, which I think, you know, driven by Galino who started many years ago, I think is a great tribute and something that we should be proud of and, you know, tribute to Scott Saunders as well, so, one of a number of things, but I thought very important.
I've attended a lot of baseball games this year. I've attended a lot of baseball games this year, and I can say that. They deserve it.
Oh, that's great.
Even when they lost, didn't matter.
That's what counts the most. It's easy to be a good sports player.
And you're winning. It's true.
Anything else? All right. Communications to the board. None to report. Unless anybody else has anything? All right. Approval of the board minutes for May seventh and May twenty-first. Make the motion to approve.
Make the motion.
Second.
Any edits, changes, comments? All in favor?
I made it upstaged just because I wasn't here for that one.
Got it. For which, for?
The seven.
For the seven. Okay. And then you'll vote for the twenty-first, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor? Good night. Thank you.
Bye.